All right, welcome, everyone. We will call to order our Committee of the Whole meeting and start by recognizing that we work, live, and play in the city of Port Alberni, which is situated on the unceded territories of the Tushat and Hoopacheset First Nations. We do have an agenda in front of us. Are there any late items from committee members? Seeing none, any from our corporate officer?
No late items, thank you. My apologies, there is a late item.
It was a rhetorical question.
Thank you. There is a late item that will be speaking to item H1 under new business, and so there are some motions that came forward from the December 9 Committee of the Whole, and this is just to update some of the calculations within that, and so Chief Owens will speak to that at that time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
With that, would somebody like to move approval of our agenda with the late items? Moved by Counselor Solder, seconded by Counselor Dame. Seeing no comments on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed, and we have minutes from the meeting held at 6:00 PM on January 14, 2025, as presented. Motion to adopt from Counselor Mealy, seconded by Counselor Dame. Any comments on the minutes? Seeing none on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed, and that takes us to public input period. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the committee. We take up to six speakers for up to five minutes each, and for anyone participating electronically, you can use the raise your hand feature. Would any members of the public like to speak today? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to delegations, and we have first Randy Thowen from FireSmart, the FireSmart Coordinator from the Alberni Clayquat Regional District. Welcome, Randy.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for your time tonight. I thought it appropriate, as we're getting near the end of the current FireSmart grant, to present to you some of the results of this grant. So we started this FireSmart, particularly FireSmart grant at the end of May of 2023, and it'll come to conclusion April 30 of this year. So we're going to talk a little bit about some of the items that we've achieved. It did work. There we go. So we're going to talk about some of the, an overview of some of the activities that we completed, some of the objectives that we still have outstanding before the end of this grant, and then the next steps. Next slide, please. So a summary of this project, so as we all know, it's a, or we may not know, it's a joint project between Tushat and Hoopacheset First Nations, the city, and then the Alberni regional, Alberni Clayquat Regional District have all partnered on this grant, and this will be the third grant that we've partnered on for FireSmart. We hosted at the Regional District Office, and we also work with the city. Basically, my position, the FireSmart Coordinator position, it's highlighted in the slide to let you know that, under the new funding requirements, we, you are required to have a FireSmart position in order to qualify for the funding. And then, again, you may or may not be aware, but we have a part-time arrangement with the fire inspector at the city fire department, who does the assessments inside the city, and then after that's completed, we handle all of the rebates and that sort of stuff through the ACRD. Next slide, please. So education and public engagement is a huge part of FireSmart, and the provincial body is well-funded and has some very smart people that continually develop our media and information that we present to the public. And, excuse me, so we had, we earmarked a lot of funding to be able to be a part of anything that was happening publicly, including markets, fairs, home shows, emergency preparedness events, and whatnot throughout the year. Excuse me. We also were able to participate in a couple of the Pro D Day activities hosted at Parks and Rec. FireSmart BC has had engaged the services of some educators, and they basically rewrote their whole education program to follow the BC curriculum, and it's all learning outcome-based, it's age-appropriate. So we were able to provide two levels of that at the Pro D events. And then at any other opportunity, we had to leverage time with the BC wildfire crews before they were deployed, we did that as well. Next slide, please. So community planning and development considerations is one of the pillars, another pillar of FireSmart. And basically, the first piece of that is highlighted there, the community wildfire plan. And so currently, we have a wildfire plan that is written for the Alberni Valley and Banfield. It was last updated in 2019, and it's a first-generation plan, so it came out of the, basically the fires that happened in Oakenoggin in 2003. It's a very good plan, but now, since that time, they're creating what they call community wildfire resiliency plans, and they're more FireSmart-focused, and so in this grant, next grant cycle, we're applying for money to rewrite that plan, and we're going to break out Banfield into its own plan, like we did with Long Beach Electoral Area in the last cycle. Banfield Electoral Area, a lot has changed since the CWP was written in 2019. And so we feel it's appropriate to break it out into its own plan and then have the Alberni Valley in its own separate plan. Excuse me. As well, I know the city has been engaged in a process to update its official community plans. The ACRD is also involved in that, looking at updating their OCPs for each electoral area. And within that process, there's opportunities to create some FireSmart policies in terms of how new projects are distributed through the various city departments, so that all departments can contribute to the development of that project as well. There's things like wildfire development permit areas that can be identified and added to the plan. For the majority of the valley, our provincial strategic threat analysis puts us at a moderate to high rating, but we do have a few pockets where we have some extreme areas identified. And so it'll be interesting to see how the updated community wildfire plan views some of the changes that have happened in the valley, particularly with some of the areas that have been logged, and then also with some of the uses that have changed in certain areas. So looking forward to seeing that information. Next slide, please. Interagency cooperation, so another pillar of FireSmart. And in here, we are required to have what they call a community FireSmart and Resiliency Collaborative. And essentially, it's a group of stakeholders in the region that get together to discuss common wildfire concerns and FireSmart initiatives. So we engage with federal agencies like Parks Canada, provincial agencies from BC Wildfire to Modi Emergency Management, BC Parks, Island Health, that sort of thing, BC Hydro. Of course, the city is invited to this group, ACRD, District Ecu, and Tofino, and then all 10 of the New Channel nations in the regional district are invited as well. And our community forest projects are also at the table, and it's designed to kind of expand or contract to address issues in the area. So if we need to add people to that committee or group or create a subgroup, we have the ability to do that. And so we meet twice a year, once in the spring, once in the fall, just to discuss common initiatives and that sort of thing. The last thing that comes out of the interagency cooperation is FireSmart BC holds an annual conference, and they've partnered with the wildfire training folks, and now that conference is combined. And so for the Saturday, Sunday, we do a whole bunch of wildfire training, mostly taking structural firefighters, like our Port Alberni firefighters, and our, some of our volunteer departments, and we cross-train them to be wildfire firefighters or more wildland urban interface, we call it. And then the three days after that, we do the FireSmart portion of the conference, and it's an excellent opportunity to attend. In this current grant, we've had funding available to send to staff members from each of our groups, the city ACRD, et cetera. And in the next grant, we've expanded that and we're applying for four positions per partner, and hoping to include not just the firefighters, but some of the Parks and Rec staff that work out in the parks and doing the outside maintenance, that sort of thing. There's some great opportunities there for them to network and learn about some of the important things that happen with FireSmart. Next slide, please. So emergency planning, excuse me. We have hosted, each year, we've hosted a wildfire tabletop exercise. It's a half-day event, and again, we invite stakeholders from all over the valley and the West Coast. And our last exercise that we hosted in the spring last year, we had 31 different, thank you, 31 different stakeholder agencies attended, including Health Emergency Management BC and a few other agencies that we normally haven't seen at these events before. It's a great way to develop and work with external expertise and then learn about how each area is prepared. Next slide, please. So training, cross-training is another pillar, and this is where, part of the area where we take structural firefighters and cross-train them into learning about wildland urban interface, and so the bottom picture you see there, last spring, we were lucky enough to host a structure protection workshop here in which the city departments, as well as volunteer departments participated. I want to say there was 30 firefighters there, maybe a bit more. And the Fall Fair folks were very kind to let us use their site, and essentially, they set up structure protection on all the buildings around the fairgrounds and then pumped water through the system, and it was really something to see how much the humidity increases in that area when that happens, and they only ran it for a short time. Some of the other things that we've held for training in the area here, local FireSmart representative training, so that's being trained to the basic level to do regular home assessments. We hosted a wildfire mitigation specialist training workshop here, again, attended by all folks from the valley, and that's to be able to do the higher-level assessments where, excuse me, where you potentially can go through and get a FireSmart certificate for your property, which may make you eligible for some discounts with your insurer. And that's getting to be a more important thing, as we all know from watching the news with what's happening in LA. Yeah, so we have a great working relationship already in the valley with our firefighters in terms of, they're already working together through automatic aid, and so anything that we can do here in this area to leverage opportunities and get that training out to them just makes it a better operation for us here. Next slide, please. So, critical infrastructure, so we started in 2021 with using some funding to get a consultant in. We did 21 assessments of critical infrastructure throughout the city and the region, and so like water supply, fire departments, the hospital, fire departments, that sort of thing, and each year, we've continued to do assessments until this year. And each year, we've, uh, continued to do assessments until this year. Uh, at the end of this year, we'll have, uh, assessed about 65 sites throughout the city and the regional district. And, uh, from these reports, the information that's garnered from this that helps to, um, speak to or support the ask for money to do mitigation work around, around these structures. And so we have, within the city, in this current grant, we, we did a couple of projects, uh, around the Echo Field House. You can see in the photo there, um, with, uh, some work that we did with softening, um, and some vegetation management, uh, around the outside of the building. And we've completed projects around various other sites previous to this, so, um, we're, we're certainly in a good place. Next slide, please. The residential part of our program has certainly, uh, uh, gained some strength and, and movement and interest. Uh, we've gone from, um, doing only a couple of dozen assessments in the very first year that we, we had residential assessments in the valley to, uh, completing well over 200, uh, with the city and the Sprout Lake area being the, the, having the most assessments completed. And so essentially each year we double our amount of assessments. And I would expect that particularly with, um, with the spotlight that's on wildfire right now with what's happening in LA, some of the difficulties are happening with home insurance, that, uh, more and more folks are going to get interested in this. Um, in this program, we have also funding for a rebate program of up to a thousand dollars. And so if a homeowner gets an assessment completed on their property and they decide to take action on any of the mitigation recommendations, we'll pay, we'll give, we'll provide them with up to a thousand dollars, so 2,000 in value. And that would be, um, if they had to hire a contractor, um, it would cover if they have to buy materials to repair something on their house. And then, uh, more importantly, they'll pay 29 bucks an hour for the homeowner's sweat equity to rake, prune and clean. And so we've had, uh, probably not as, not as, uh, robust interest in this, uh, rebate program this time around as we did last time. And we're hoping for more, but certainly it's, uh, a few more applications are coming in here as we get to the end of the grant. Uh, our curbside waste pickup, um, one of the requirements of the program is that once we do residential assessments, we're required to have some sort of a, a vegetation management piece in place. And so we, we've test drove a couple of different things, but we find the curbside works best. And, uh, again, uh, the city was probably the biggest user of the program. Um, in fact, um, it, it was so well-used that, uh, we, we hit our, our budget amount last fall and had to have a discussion with, uh, UBCM folks about getting permission to, to reallocate some residual funding to keep, keep the program going. And so it'll definitely be a, a, a part of our program moving forward. Next slide, please. And so next steps, um, we are in the process of putting together our application now, even though the grant doesn't finish until April 30th. We are allowed to apply early as long as we've completed our interim reporting. And our intent there is to try and prevent the lag that happens between the programs. Uh, previously there was always about a three-month gap or so. Um, and in particular this year, just because of how things have advanced, it would leave us without any FireSmart positions in the valley throughout the time that we need them in the summer here, right? So, uh, but like I said, we have to have a FireSmart position. We have to participate in that collaborative and we have to have an acceptable plan so we can tick all those boxes. Um, I've been working with, uh, various city, uh, managers to identify, um, work that they may need to get done around some of our critical infrastructure as well, uh, a new category that's, uh, um, available to us. And working with, uh, Wayne and Parks and Rec, um, we can do some work on green space areas uh, without having to get a fuel management prescription written. Um, and so we're, we're test-driving that in the Dry Creek area, um, as well. Uh, we've identified that we want to, um, pursue fuel management prescriptions for the Roger Creek area and the upper, I guess, Dry Creek area, uh, two areas that we've had some fire activity in. And the challenge we have with those areas in talking with the BC Wildfire Prevention folks that do wildfire risk analysis, they recognize that there's an issue there. However, there's only so much funding for, for their, uh, work as well. And because our Provincial Strategic Threat Analysis rating is overall is moderate, it gets put to the bottom of the pile. But, um, with our, 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 uh, regional application to get a field prescription written for the area because it will involve the city, regional district, private landowners, and they were right on the edge of the crown land. Once we come to the table with our prescription, it automatically brings the crown, uh, to the table. So we'll look forward to seeing what that process is like. It's a new thing for us. We, I'm not aware of us doing any kind of major fuel management before in the area, so, um, we're looking forward to that. Um, and other than that, uh, like I said, the grant is, we're hoping to have this, uh, application in and, and have that discussion with UBCM and BC Wildfires so we can get, uh, our approvals, uh, prior to the end of this one so that we know that we don't have that lag. Um, and other than that, the program's been a great success. We're, we're well-placed in the valley here with, uh, the work that we've been doing and it'd be great to keep building on that. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Randy. That was excellent. And I think hit a lot of the topics that we've been asking questions about, so, and thanks for the thorough report, Councilor Mealy.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Thanks, Randy. Appreciate it for all the information. I've been actually, uh, keeping an eye on it, uh, through the ACRD Facebook site. They put posts where you're at and, and if you're out in the west coast or whatever. So I've seen a couple of posts over the year, which is great. Um, just for the curbside yard waste, could you, is that a specific date and time during the year where it's set? Or is it just when people apply and they go through the process? Can I just get a little clarification on that, please?
Yeah, through the mayor, um, our curbside program, basically we take a list of names each week from residents in, in the valley and the city. Uh, so name, address, phone number kind of thing. And then at the end of the week, we forward that list to the contractor and then they have the following week to complete that pickup. And so you're allowed two piles per property. And, uh, we don't take a tape measure to the pile, but we did have to put a, a parameter on it. So we say, uh, basically eight feet by eight feet by five feet high. And really we'll take, uh, anything that'll fit through their chipper pretty much, as long as there's no dirt or root balls, that kind of stuff. Of course, we don't take organics because we have a great program in town. And, uh, and we're not able to take, and through this current grant, we're not able to take invasive species like blackberry or broom.
Councilor Petola.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to Mr. Thon. Uh, broom was the thing I was going to be interested in and, uh, when you talk about fuel management, it, does that include kind of broom reduction, especially in areas that we do have jurisdiction over such as green space parks within the city or, or adjacent to?
So it's sort of, uh, it's a twofold answer. So the primary focus of FireSmart is to get wildfire prevention and mitigation onto private property. So, um, the private property owner doesn't own the roadway. Um, we don't own the hydro wideways, uh, uh, or like the log train trail, for example, that's, uh, part of Modi, it's crown. Um, so we don't have, that's really the issue is we, it has, the, the property has to be owned by a private owner, um, residential, and then we'll, if it's on their property, um, we're working on a way to be able to collect that. But that's our challenge with invasive species in those areas because they have, um, other programs available, um, provincially to, to, that are supposed to deal with that. Uh, within the city, if you're, for example, if we run into some of the invasives while we're doing the work in Dry Creek, uh, that would be part of that, uh, sort of low-growing or understory vegetation that we would remove. But unfortunately we don't, I know the broom folks have been, um, very enthusiastic about trying to access the program, but I don't have a way to, to work around that.
Councilor Haggard.
Thank you very much for the presentation, Randy. I've sat through at the regional district, but I still learned something today as well. There's always something to learn when you hear a presentation. I think what the fires at Cameron Lake a couple of summers ago really brought to the forefront how vulnerable we are as a community and how quickly things can happen. And when you watch the news about the LA fires, it's just devastating what, what can happen to a community. So I just want to thank you for your work. And if somebody wants to have an assessment done, would they contact you directly at the regional district office? Great, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you so much. All right. Uh, we'll move on to unfinished business and the first item is our five-year financial plan Q and A. Andrew.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. So, uh, we had one additional question added since the last meeting and the answers within the Q and A. And, uh, here if there's any other further questions from the committee or, uh, any, any questions about the answer.
Thank you. I think that was actually my question, I'm just flipping back to it. But, um, it was about training expenses and the question wasn't, uh, it, yeah, so the answer was cut off, so we can't actually see the totals in the document. Um, but it, also the, the question was not, um, to have each department's training costs broken out, but rather to have, it was to have the training costs over the last several years, the actuals. Um, so I don't think that it's been, unless, I, I don't think somebody else asked this question also. So it was, I think we were $40,000 under budget in 2024 is what we're expecting. And the question was, where did we actually fall in 2023, 2022? And then I think we said skip 2020, 2021, et cetera. Um, so I don't see that information unless it's in the cutoff part possibly.
Madam Chair, I apologize. I, my understanding was that we would get the current 2024 year, but we most definitely will get, uh, further information to the Q and A at the next, uh, next meeting.
Wonderful, thank you. And this is a helpful breakdown as well, so additional information. Any other questions, uh, to add or comments? Okay, seeing none with some, yeah, go ahead, Councilor Mealy.
Just, just clarification on that. So the, the, uh, the first line of CAO Corporate Services, does that, does that also include council? In that? I just want to make sure of that.
Council has a separate training budget. Thank you. Training and travel. Okay, uh, would somebody like to move for seat? Motion received by Councilor Mealy, seconded by Councilor Dame, seeing no comments on the motion, all in favor. Carrie, nonopposed, thank you. And on to item two, 2025 to 2029 financial plan. Andrew.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as we continue through, uh, the, uh, second committee, the whole to focus on each department, uh, we, uh, brought forward the full, uh, details as far as level of service to the committee to review. Should there be any questions, we could, uh, possibly pose those right now. Or if, uh, we'd like to wait to the department presentations, we can wait till then, but, uh, open to whatever the committee would like to do.
Councilor Haggard.
Andrew, when I went through all the financial reports, there's several examples where the 2024 actual budget was much less than the 2024 projections. However, when you started doing the 25, 26, 27, 28, uh, projections, it seemed like you went, um, the projections were done on the higher amount plus a slight increase, I'm assuming for CPI. So are you doing your projections for the next four years based on the last five-year average? And not the actuals for the 2024 year?
Madam Chair, uh, what we're doing is we're looking at, uh, the actuals that aren't completely finished yet either. So we have to remember that our cutoff for, uh, the 2024 year will occur at the end of this month. Uh, so there might be some adjustments, might be some changes. When we talk about public works or other departments like that, uh, sometimes we, uh, we see, we have to look at the entire department on the whole, uh, because each line item, uh, might be a little bit different here or there. So I think, uh, as we get closer to, uh, probably the end of February, we'll have some, uh, firm numbers as far as the finals. Uh, so when we do look at the actual, uh, future years, we've asked the budget managers to look at what, uh, what, you know, it might go up over the next while here. So we might see, uh, some, some departments like IT were experiencing, uh, 5% increases for software. Uh, if we're seeing, uh, supplies for others such as office supplies, it might be a little bit lower. So we try to review each line item and, and see what the trend is, looking back over the past, uh, few years uh, and then trying, trying to readjust based on that. But I think if we look on the whole, we've been fairly tight to where we've been budgeting to. So, um, we've been working on that and there's not a lot of excess in each line item because we've been, uh, kind of chipping away as, uh, as we've called it before, at, uh, wherever we can.
Thank you very much. And one more question if I may, I'm sorry, I probably should have asked that at the last part. Uh, last year the projected budget increase for 2025 was just under 10%. And I'm just warning you, if you can sign a pinpoint what the big increases are, why it jumped from 10% to 15% for this year, if you know anything specific, or you can bring it back at the next meeting on your Q and A.
Madam Chair, just to clarify, was that the increase in 2024 for 2025?
Yes.
So, Madam Chair, the, uh, increase from, uh, 2024 to 2025 was 14.63%, I believe, when we adopted the financial plan. And now, um, we've seen some increases due to, uh, some benefit costs, um, uh, WorkSafe premiums, uh, other items that we didn't anticipate. So those are, are starting to be populated in the financial plan based on the information that we received end of December, early January. So that's one factor. Um, you know, obviously we look at the experience that we're seeing in some of the line items and we do have to adjust. But for the most part, if there's a change in the price for some of our capital that we're anticipating, we will be bringing forward that, uh, to, uh, the committee and council for resolution to make change. That is very transparent and clear on what's going on. And with our reporting for future capital, we'll ensure that we have that detail. But, um, you know, there has been some changes. Obviously there's been some amendments that council had made with the, uh, APR and, uh, certain other provisions uh, that didn't impact it and we got to 15.63. So, um, we can, we can further explore why those increases are and we'll bring further information to the committee and council as we need.
Thank you very much. Sorry to put you on the spot like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Petola, and then Councilor Solder.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have four questions and I'm going to go by reference to pages in the, um, agenda. But you might not need to go there. On page 24, under Police Services, there is an amount for building rental. I'm just wondering what we rent from the police department or what the police department rents out in their buildings. It seems like a substantial amount. Oh, 25, sorry.
So building rentals, uh, in the revenue, uh, column, that would be the, uh, portion of rent that the federal and provincial officers, uh, pay for use of the municipal detachment.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, and then, uh, on page 37, Cemetery Services, uh, I note that the cemetery operates at a loss. And I'm just wondering if that is, uh, possibly because plots are bought at a certain point in time and then that contract is done, as it were, but prices or expenses go up over time? Is it a historical issue or is it, uh, associated to something else?
Madam Chair, that is a historical issue. So obviously the maintenance and long-term operations of the facility, the, the cemetery is, uh, not achieving cost recovery.
Thank you. Um, for, page 58 is the McLean Mill, uh, budget. And I could have this all wrong, but it didn't seem to me that the numbers added up. Uh, specifically, the, well, we can start at the 2024 budget. Uh, under expenditures, I have 130,000, 53,000, 4,000 and 15,000 and total expenditures of 262,000 in round numbers. It seems to me that, that, my math says that doesn't work, but maybe I'm missing something.
I will review that, uh, because it looks, yes, it doesn't look like that's correct. So we will, uh, review the, uh, the cell reference on that.
Thank you. And finally, on page 136, uh, is a Parks budget. No, yeah, it's just, just a question about the numbers, is I see that under revenues, on page 136, there's a line for the Beaver Creek Recreation Granton Aid, and the Cherry Creek Granton Aid, and the Sprout Lake Granton Aid. So I have been mistakenly claiming, it seems, that the ECRD doesn't pay for our parks at all, but it seems from this budget that, in fact, three of the districts do. Do I, have I misinterpreted? Is it, but it seems that those are funds we receive from those areas with regards to parks.
Yep, those are historic funds that we've received probably for like 15 to 20 years. The amounts have not increased, and I think the last assessment that was done, it was like, the average regional district taxpayer was paying $18 compared with $300. Those numbers are not correct, but it was something drastically different. So yes, there is a contribution that's made.
Thank you, yeah. Some contribution is better than no contribution, but certainly saying there's a contribution doesn't necessarily justify the level. Thank you.
Thank you. And just as a quick follow-up, because of the question on the RCMP building, how is that rental amount determined in the split between the rural areas and the city?
Madam Chair, that's based on a ratio of officers that are for the city portion, and then the federal and provincial.
So in theory, they're paying about 25% of the building. I think it's nine officers, federal and provincial, to 32, roughly. We can get more information later, but that's helpful. And do we just bill them for that, based on our overall costs of that building, with everything included?
Madam Chair, that is an agreement that we have with the RCMP, and we update that agreement, and we do also look at the debt servicing that we have. So we take, we take all the costs that are associated with the detachment, and try to allocate that fairly, based on the ratios that we have. And we just check in and do that update. I forget the interval, but we can confirm that for the committee.
Thank you. That's really helpful. Councilor Solder, and then Councilor Haggard.
I just, a little clarification on page 17 regarding the contract services. I just picked that out of there, because I noticed the budget in 2024 was 10,000, then it jumps up in 2025 to 60,000, and then it goes down again in the following years. Is, what is that? Am I reading that right, or? On, sorry, page 17. And it's on, you see it, 2121 and 212112.
Madam Chair, the, in the budget for that, that year, for 2025, there is a website update that Corporate Services noted, and that's where it is. So that's the 50,000 that's sitting in there for the website updates.
Thank you. Councilor Haggard.
Just to clarify, Madam Chair, I think the grants and aid were implemented when the multiplex was built, so that would have been over 20 years ago, and there's been no increases that I am aware of during that time.
I think I guessed 15 to 20 years, but, thank you. Councilor, sorry, Councilor Dame.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, I don't want to get too into the details here, but I'm just trying to get an idea of exactly, you know, a better understanding of, I really like on page 15, we have this, this table that shows each department and the taxation to provide the service last year, as compared to what we're looking at this year. Now, is it safe to say that anytime we see administration listed as the, as the line labeled, that the increase is likely due to additional staff being hired? Is that a safe assumption?
Madam Chair, just for clarification, so administration for...
Yeah, sorry, I should have been more specific. There are many departments listed here, for instance, Engineering Administration, Public Works, Parks and Rec, all of these, you know, there's Engineering Administration, Public Works Administration. When we see that, and we see increases from last year, I'm just wondering, like, I know that a lot of these lines incorporate many different reasons for the increase in cost, but specifically, when we see administration, does that typically mean that additional staff were hired for that department?
Thank you for the clarification, Councilor Dame. So with that, there is a component, like, that's administration services for each area, so it'd be for infrastructure services or public works services. So if we're looking at the specific wage and benefits, if those are going up, likely that is due to a increase in staffing, but I don't, and I don't believe that engineering admin went up, or public works. So I'm, you know, I think it, you know, the administration is the, the activities, such as the office across the street for infrastructure services. So we have technicians, we have the managers over there, but they're also split across water and sewer services, too. So it, unless I have some direct reference, I might be a little bit challenged to provide some feedback, so if there's more questions, please feel free.
Sure, thank you. And I should state that I was just, you know, trying to explain what I meant by administration. Some of those lines that I listed did not increase, just for anybody watching, some of them actually decreased. I do have, I did note a few of them that increased, and that was what spurred the question. But yeah, no, I appreciate that, and maybe I'll just have to do a bit more research. Thanks.
Thank you. Mike.
Yeah, through the chair, I just want to clarify, too, on the administration line, some of those areas, it can be a result of vacant positions, so not hiring new positions. But if we had a vacancy, and then we're expecting that vacancy to become filled sometime in 2025, then that would be an increase to the department budget. So using a software called Questica, we actually value the position, and we update based on the amount we feel the position is going to be filled for the year. So if going into a year, we know we aren't going to have a position for a month or three months for a reason, we actually budget, and we take that out of that coming year. So sometimes last year, as in management, we were short several positions last year. Most of those positions are filled now, but we still have some Q P positions that go unfilled, that we were expecting to be filled by January, since they remain empty until they're filled. We're guessing, or putting in our best guess on when we will fill those jobs, and then when they fill, that would be part of the increase of that.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay. Then Councilor Haggard, would you like to move her seat?
I'd like to move that the Committee of the Whole received the report 2025 to 2029 financial plan dated January 5, 2025, and provide recommendations to council.
Thank you. Moved by Councilor Haggard, seconded by Councilor Mealy, seeing no comments. Councilor, sorry, Councilor Solder.
I answer to everybody, so it's okay. Madam Mayor, maybe you can just explain to the public, too, because going through the documents, and the question I did ask the mayor while somebody was talking here, was some of these changes in there will reflect in the future, because we have had this discussion before, just so the public knows that we're just letting this all go, so.
Sure. There was a question about whether some of the changes that we talked about at our last Committee of the Whole meeting have been implemented in this budget yet, but the answer would be no, because they have to go to a committee, or to a full council meeting still. So there's a lot of changes that are in progress, and information that's been asked for, and this is obviously just continuation of the process, so thank you. Yeah, absolutely. Okay. With that, on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. Thank you, Andrew, and moving on to staff reports, financial services, financial services department service levels, and response to financial plan motions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'd like to thank Corporate Services for lining me up here, and not getting up and down. Well, if it wasn't, if it wasn't a budget meeting, yes, yes, I'll be here. I'll be here. So, Madam Chair and committee, we've been provided with some resolutions, obviously, to seek, you know, some areas for review in each department. So I'll walk through financial services and provide a little bit of history and, and understanding of what we do, hopefully. It's pretty cyclical, as far as what we do, it's year to year. It usually is very the same with some project work that we try to achieve, or any standards that are required as far as public sector accounting standards, or some best practices that are required for local government governance and financial reporting. So the Finance Department obviously has the Finance Department, but also includes information technology and a newer role, the asset management role for the organization, but it's within the Financial Services Department. So within finance, we have the Director and Deputy, myself, and with that, we also have the Tax Clerk, the Assistant Accountant, the Accountant, Utility Clerk, and, and a few other roles, but each role has its own role as far as taxation. That's the focus, obviously, for that department. Then we also have the Utility Role, which is water, sewer, and solid waste collection. And then we also have a few roles that focus on the Treasury Bank and some procurement support. So we do cover quite a few different bases across the entire department, and we also support the entire organization for financial support. With that, we've been fairly stagnant as far as roles in the department. We've had one role that was reduced in 2018, and then that was brought back up recently, with some changes in duties, of course, but for the most part, the Finance Department has been the same for many years. We've tried to enact technology to support some of our changes, to improve efficiency, one being the budgeting software that we've included, that supports a lot of work that was done manually through Excel sheets. And as we've seen tonight, you can make errors in Excel sheets, so it's important that we have a balancing software that allows that confidence in that. So that, you know, that's just one example, but we continue to try to make sure that what we do is done electronically, done a little bit quicker, so that does support the lack of requests coming to council for additional resources. But I do look at procurement and our payroll department, as far as two areas that we've required, you know, some support, and we've relied on a little bit of external support in procurement, but we do have a decentralized procurement system, so we rely on each manager to undertake their own procurement, and we support as much as we can administratively, and that does, I think there's some inefficiencies there, but we do need to bring justification for additional resources there. When it comes to payroll, we haven't, we haven't seen an increase in resourcing there, and there has been some changes over the years. We've used to have onboarding and some other services provided by Parks and Rec, but many years ago, we made that change, and as we start to see more demands on that role, it starts to put a lot of time demands on that. So we're probably going to bring forward recommendations for additional resourcing and support there. So when I looked at the Finance Department, I did not bring forward any changes, because a lot of what we do is providing service for the entire organization. When we look at the Information Technology Department, we did see some additional resources fairly recently, and we've seen the need for RCMP resourcing, which has been approved through council. That was originally about a .2 of a position, and that is now a one, a full-time position at the RCMP, and there's quite a bit of demand on that role, as we see body cameras come into play and whatnot. So that department has that resource now, and then we've also seen the reliance on technology, too, for the departments across the organization, and that, and that role now has, has three, plus the manager at the City Hall. And then finally, the Asset Management Role, that came forward a couple of years ago, and we secured that role last April. That role's been integral in the master planning and supporting. In fact, while there was a vacancy at, at the Infrastructure Services Department, our manager filled in to support the master planning work that was done by our project manager for, for Infrastructure Services. So you'll see in the quarterly report, the work that was done by that, by that individual. So with that, you know, I can see some changes, maybe with our, our City Hall, we can make some modest changes in the department, but we've really looked at every line item, and there's, there's not a significant amount of change that the department can bring forward for changes. So with that, I provide it back to the committee for any discussion.
Thank you very much. Comments, questions? Okay. Councilor Petola, would you like to read the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move that the Committee of the Whole received the Financial Services Department 2025, 2029 service level report, and Financial Services Department/Response to Financial Plan Motions dated January 14, 2025.
Thank you very much. Seconded by Councilor Mealy, seeing no comments on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. Thank you. All right, moving on to item number two, Infrastructure Services Department Service Levels and Response to Financial Plan Motions.
Good evening. Excuse me. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. Here tonight to present the staff report from Infrastructure Services in Response to Financial Plan Motions. So at the December 9 regular meeting of council, passed two motions directing administration to conduct a comprehensive review of operational services with the objective of identifying options to reduce operational budgets and/or increase revenues. And the purpose of this report is to focus in on the areas that were explicitly, or, excuse me, specific to the Infrastructure Services Department. With the first motions for the maintenance reductions, we were, we are responsible for boulevards and street cleaning within Public Works. So the staff and I took a look at the boulevards maintenance, and under the analysis section of the report, you'll see a summary that in 2024, our budget was 191,484, which can be further broken down into three main categories, under general maintenance, flail mowing, and manual vegetation control. The predominant expenditure in all these programs is wages, and the budget is quite lean and provides a basic level of service to complete tasks like power washing, manual vegetation, soil control, and flail mower services. We, staff, do not recommend reduction to maintenance in these areas. The next item, specific to infrastructure, Public Works, was street cleaning. In 2024, the budget was just over $200,000. The current sweeping program follows some routes around the city and provides a very basic level of service, keep our roadways and hotspots clean and tidy. We do have seasonal variations, predominantly in spring and fall, where there's higher frequency of cleaning. Staff have taken a closer look at some recent changes we've made to project tracking, and so, for instance, when there's other work associated with sewer, or waterworks, or with parks, we've gotten better at charging the sweeping tasks to those projects, and from that, we identified that there could be approximately $30,000 in savings to the street cleaning program without a substantial change to the level of service provided today. Moving on to the second part of the report, under Operational Cost Savings, so we were asked to suggest additional operational cost-saving measures that we can identify in non-core service level areas. So within the Public Works area, a couple areas that we investigated were the Christmas lights installation around the city. So in 2023, we expended $55,000 in contracted services to install and maintain those lights, similar cost in 2024. This is a service for the community, but yet doesn't provide a core service to our citizens. So that was one area identified, if council or committee decides to investigate further. Another program or area investigated was roadway crack sealing. So in 2024, we expended just under $60,000. This is meant to extend the useful life of failing asphalt in our roadways. We don't recommend reductions to this program. We don't recommend reductions to this program as it will prolong higher expenditures with resurfacing requirements. However, again, it's not a core service. We don't recommend those reductions. And then finally, under roadway line painting, so 2023 was just under $45,000, similar budget for 2024. And this program includes painting roadway lines, thermoplastic crosswalks, roadway center lines, and other miscellaneous line painting. Staff do not recommend reduction to this service level as it's a priority for safety implications in the community on our roadways. However, again, this is not a core service, so if council decides to investigate further, we can provide more information on that. Attached to this report are the two service level reports for both engineering and Public Works. As a reminder to committee members, this was presented back in July 29, 2024. The financial information has been updated to reflect 2025 budget. However, the original service level descriptions and categories remain the same as previously presented. I'm happy to go through any specific program or department within Engineering Public Works if committee would like so.
Thank you very much. Questions from council? These are easy tonight. No questions, no comments. I'll just ask, the change that you suggested to street sweeping, will that be an automatic change made in the budget, or do you need a, I mean, it's just shifting in how things are billed. Is our budget currently reflecting the reduced amount that you mentioned, or do we need to give that direction?
Through the chair, thank you for the question. I believe current budget reflects the existing, so without those changes. So correct me if I'm wrong, we would need a motion from committee to council to make those changes.
Thank you. And then just noted on the line painting that we were over budget $10,000 in 2023 or 2024, whatever year it was. Is that because the budget we had didn't just generally meet the need and we kind of paint lines based on need, or was that as a result of the year that we couldn't get any line painting done as a result of paint shortage?
Through the chair, thank you for the question. It was unfortunately a situation with our contractor where they had some malfunctions with their equipment. They were unable to come to the community to complete the task. It was highly sought after from our Public Works Department to get that contractor here. However, by the time they were able to, it was too late in the season to come and complete the paintings.
Thank you. Okay. Counselor Solder.
Can I just go back to the line painting? How does that work? Because there's a lot of people can't see lines, crosswalk lines and stuff like that. So there's a lot of people responding to that. So how do we do the line painting? I did have that question on my marking, and same as with the roadway lines. What kind of program do we have? That's probably.
Madam Chair, so line paint, we don't have enough budget to do all the lines every year. So what we have to do is we basically drive through the city. We look at, obviously, the ones that are the most important, so our arterials or collectors. Thermoplast is one of those items that could last five years, and then when it starts to fade, we have to get that done. That's when, some of the crosswalks are in higher traffic areas. Use thermoplast because it just lasts that much longer with all the traffic. So it does vary year by year, but we try to cover all the most important areas first.
Thank you. Counselor Dame.
Thank you. If I may, I'll move that the street cleaning budget be reduced by, well, sorry, that the committee recommended council that the street cleaning budget be reduced by $30,000 in 2025 and moving forward.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Dame, seconded by Counselor Solder. Comments? See, Counselor Mealy?
It's just a small detail. It just says there could be approximately $30,000 in savings, so, yeah, I understand what we're trying to do here. So, I mean, we can, if there's anything different, I guess we can talk about it council. Okay.
For sure. Thank you. Okay. Seeing no other comments on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. And did you want to move receipt of the report as well? Counselor Dame?
Yes, I would. Is it all right to simply say motion to receive, or do we need to read what is on the sheet? Okay, no problem. I move that the Committee of the Whole receive the Infrastructure Services Department 2025 to 2029 service level report and Infrastructure Services Department Response to Financial Plan motions dated January 14, 2025.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Dame, seconded by Counselor Mealy, seeing no comments on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. Thank you very much for the report. All right, moving on to Fire Department Service Levels and Response to Financial Plan Motions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So before you is our service level report as well as the response to the motions that were made at the December 9 council meeting. So just looking at the response here, what we were tasked to do was to analyze our overtime. I will start just by giving a hats off and a kudos to Deputy Chief Cross as well as the Finance Department. We, at present, don't use a technology base to break down our overtime to this level of detail. So this has highlighted that as something that we'll aim for in the future. So this, a lot of this required Deputy Chief Cross to go through a handwritten logbook to look day by day as to where we spent various overtime, which was, obviously, took a lot of time, but just want to thank him for that work. So starting off, I've listed these in the order of greatest expense to the least. So 63% of our overtime spend in 2024 was simply to maintain the minimum staffing of four. So that was to cover for illness and injury. We had four people that were on long-term illness or injury during the 2024 year. The next highest spend was for structure fire response at 16%. Then below that is station coverage for the duty crew responding to road rescues. You'll see an asterisk beside that as we do get cost recovery on that item. 3% were collective agreement obligations for personnel working Christmas and New Year's Day, 3% for wildfire response, 3% for overtime for special duties. A couple of examples of that is when our crews respond to a traumatic call, we now engage with WorkSafe BC's Critical Incident Response Unit. They supply a psychologist for us to attend, typically via a Teams meeting, and what we'll do is we'll have the night shift typically, we'll stay over so that the day shift oncoming who experienced the event are able to go through that mental health debriefing without being interrupted. And also included within that line is our Joint Occupational Health and Safety Committee members attending Josh meetings. 3% for extension of duties, so that's where a call comes in before the end of shift, and then that call extends into the next shift. And so we pay those in 15-minute increments, not a two and a half minimum call out as would be the case on when we have to call folks in from home. And then below that are a number of smaller items that represent 1% or less than 1% of our overall budget. Maybe I'll stop there in case there's any questions.
Absolutely. Questions, comments? Not seeing it. Oh, Counselor Mealy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the Fire Chief. So just as we see it on page 102, and the first one is the 63% to maintain minimum staffing of four, that's the overtime. So that is above and beyond what we budgeted for that year. I just want to make sure, or I just want to get the clarification.
Yeah, thank you for the question, through the chair. No, this is our overall overtime spend. We were over on our overtime allotment here, and I'm scrambling to see if I have that in front of me. We may have to bring that number back just to give you really accurate numbers, but, yeah, we were over. So this is the entire allocation of overtime for the Fire Department.
Counselor Haggard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief Owens, the major issue I see with increase with the department is the increase in the number of medical calls. They've increased significantly in the last three years or so, which is causing a lot of burnout for your firefighters, which I totally understand. But we do have several concepts that are in the works right now that will hopefully, if they come to fruition, which I think they will, there's some really good ideas coming out, and I think the province is really going to assist us in getting those brought in to help bring those numbers down. So in the meantime, I don't want firefighters to run short on shifts and put themselves in danger or to put our public in danger. Is there any consideration to hiring a part-time firefighter so to give us, to ensure that those shifts are fully staffed without incurring overtime, and that will give us some time in order to hopefully implement these new ideas and concepts to our community until those numbers start to come down? Is that a possibility?
Thank you for the question. So at present, the collective agreement doesn't allow for it as the collective agreement does stipulate the hours of work and doesn't have, it wasn't drafted conceiving that we would be bringing on part-time personnel. What is in the present-day collective agreement is the ability to reduce staff. So if we were to increase staffing, the efforts that are put forth by City Council and the Province of British Columbia are successful, and we do see a dramatic reduction in calls, which results in us no longer needing those additional personnel, then within the existing collective agreement, we do have the ability then to reduce staff back to current levels, as an example. So that's an instrument that we could use present day. If we were looking to do anything outside of that, it would require that to come forward at collective bargaining.
I seem to remember in your last presentation, you said that you had used a part-time firefighter?
No, we have not used a part-time firefighter. We did utilize one firefighter. If you recall back to, I'm just trying to recall now what the title of that was. It was the Resource Planning and Succession Initiative, which was passed by City Council in 2023. Worth noting, within this report, we ended up training that individual, and we were, we'd actually served that person layoff notice, and we had a long-term injury that sprung up between the time that we have served notice and the time that that person was actually going to be laid off. And so that individual ended up fulfilling 46 shifts, which otherwise would have needed to have been covered by other mechanisms, including additional overtime. So that was an example where we utilized exactly what I was just talking about, where we utilized the present language in our present-day collective agreement to bring that person on. We didn't change the collective agreement. That person was working for three months, and then we intended to lay that person off, ended up being able to bring them across to cover those shifts, and then did lay that person off. And then there was an individual who left the organization, which created the vacancy, and that person was brought back on to fill that vacancy.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Solder.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I have a quick question. So how do we mitigate overtime? And I'm referring to if we had another full-time, because you've got people that sick, if they're sick, they're on holidays, so we're back down to square one, because I've seen how the scheduling works, and it's quite interesting how you do it all and try to arrange holidays and who's on what shift, et cetera. But so how do we mitigate that, even with another person? You know, and if two people got injured, knock on wood here, how do we mitigate it?
Thank you for the question. It's a simple question that's maybe not easy to answer because there's so many factors that go into it. So if we're looking, you know, obviously, the way to reduce the number two item there is to reduce the number of structure fires that we have would reduce that overtime. But our number one item that we have, the 63% to maintain minimum staffing, some of, maybe I'll just talk to the factors, which is that we're just starting to see people taking sick leave more frequently than we previously have in the past. And we're actually getting into situations where my greatest concern that happens, well, happened on Friday, it happened a few days before that, where we went partial shifts where we were just unable to find somebody to be that fourth person. We had offered the overtime to everybody in the department who wasn't working and was eligible to work, and we were unable to find that. So during those periods of time, now we're reducing our crew strength down to three. When we do so, it then inhibits our ability to do that core job of fighting fires. We can't make entry into buildings when we do not have a crew complement of four. So, you know, I guess getting back to your question, how do we reduce overtime? I think that some of it is increasing staffing will accomplish it in two different ways. One is it reduces the burden and stresses on the firefighters as they carry out their day-to-day duties, and hopefully, that leaves them mentally and physically more able to show up the next day. And the second is, you know, in some cases, we would have, we had hoped on Friday morning to incur more overtime, and we were just unable to. So having additional staff that may have been scheduled for that day would then obviously alleviate overtime on that day and, again, contributes to a lessening of the risk of burnout that we're seeing in our department right now.
Just a quick response to that. So if we, just hypothetically putting it out here, if we went to three and you only have three going on the truck, and you get there and you need obviously the fourth person, is that when you can call mutual aid in to come and pick up the behind scenes type of thing?
Yes, so that's what we, starting in November of 2023, we changed the way that our mutual aid partners responding to the city. So prior to that date in November, the volunteer fire departments would only come into the city if the structure was larger than a duplex. In November of 2023, we amended how we perform that mutual aid. We essentially are utilizing the mutual aid agreement as the automatic aid agreement, and the volunteer fire departments are now coming into the community for all structure fires. Part of the magic of how we're able to suppress fires so quickly and reduce damage so effectively and be in a position to affect rescues is that we're very quick, and there's an inherent delay that's built into those volunteer firefighters that come. They're oftentimes at home when the page comes in, they have to respond to the hall, get dressed, get in their apparatus, and then respond, obviously, a longer distance many times into wherever that incident is happening within the city. All that while, our crew is on scene and awaiting for somebody, anybody, and oftentimes it is one of those volunteer fire departments that is the second in apparatus, and we're so thankful that we have that relationship with them.
Counselor Petola.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, with thanks to Deputy Chief Cross for all his work, and apologies, because if the message of wanting an analysis of overtime was the message you got from me, then I have misspoken myself. And in the words of Cool Hand Luke, what we have is a failure to communicate. I am not at all concerned about the fire department doing a good job, and I'm not concerned at all with the way this budget has been put together to do the job the fire department has been asked to do. And I completely agree that a four-person crew for entry is necessary, especially if there are individuals involved in a structure fire. Patient care goes significantly downhill if you can't get to the patient. So those are all things that I fully support. But what I am interested in is, like Counselor Sola stated, is how do we mitigate the overtime or mitigate the burnout? And I'm coming from a point of view, which is, first of all, that this is a fire department. So as an optional service, and so this is just to understand where I'm coming from because we might not be coming from the same place, and that might be the failure to communicate. But we have 46 fires a year. So a fire department is an optional service, historically created by insurance companies to cover their assets, so it's really got a financial basis to it. It produces safety in the community. But it's still tied to insurance companies because the fire underwriters is made by insurance companies, and the reason we have a fire department apart from saving lives and structures is that it reduces your insurance rates. So starting from there, we have a fire department, and I don't see anywhere in the mission statement or the vision that structure fires or fires at all are mentioned. They're mentioned, all that's said there is providing quality of service. And I think perhaps our service, although it is of very high quality, may have expanded further for historical reasons than is necessary at this point in time. So question boils down to, and I'm not asking this question specifically, but for sake of argument, it boils down to, how much would it cost and what would the model be to have a fully funded, efficient fire department to put out 46 fires a year? Because that's what we have to do. Now, it's great that that type of fire department has evolved in a way that we do all these other things that are essentially assistance to our neighbors and partners that we can provide assistance to. But when that assistance derogates from our ability to do our primary purpose, we have to say, yeah, I'd love to help you move on Saturday, but sorry, I'm busy with something else. So I saw in the news today a report from the ambulance union suggesting that the ambulance service does not pay overtime, and as a result, 25% of ambulance cars in the province are empty or out of service every day. So that's our partner saying, do you want to help me move on Saturday? Oh, and by the way, can you bring the truck, the pizza, the beer, and do all the moving? So that causes me to think we need to refocus our tasks so that we can be an efficient department. So job of council is to provide direction, and council, historically, even this council has done that through the fire control bylaw. And that sets out in the Schedule A what services the fire department is to provide. And the fire department has gone about and done that very well, provided those services very well. And as appropriate, very appropriate, has come back to council to say when they're not able to provide those services and ask for extra funding or improvements so they can continue providing those services. What we're missing here is suggestions or options to decrease and mitigate the amount of burnout and overtime within the context of a fire department. None of us here are firefighters. We haven't taken our live fire courses. We don't really know how it works. And you probably don't want us guessing at how it works. But having said that, when I look at the instructions that have been given to you, I'm wondering if we can't provide some better, clearer, and more focused instructions that will save money. And in that sense, I'm thinking about, of course, the amount of medical calls, because 46 fires and some 1,800 medical calls are widely out of balance for what a fire department should be doing. And I agree with the mayor's comments from a past meeting that, you know, if the people in the fire department are sitting around doing one call a week or less than one call a week, I wouldn't suggest they're sitting around, but they're certainly available to assist our neighbors. But at this point in time, the neighbor, our neighbors are asking for too much, and it's causing our fire department to go under. Now, there are other items that we have put on Schedule A, including marine fire suppression, shipboard firefighting, confined space rescue, technical rope rescue, slope rescue, hazmat, swift water, open water, and general public assistance. Now, I don't know which of those things are required. I imagine that confined space might be something that is required service for our fire department to be trained in to assist other city workers in their jobs. But I don't think, if that's not true, that we need to provide that service to an independent commercial enterprise in the city simply to aid in their, in their, in their work. So for example, if we maintain confined space rescue teams for the purposes of assisting a particular industrial site, we should be contracting to that particular industrial site at a rate that covers our costs to provide that service or discontinue that service so that the training, the training cost, the training time, the response time, number of calls associated with it, equipment costs and upkeep can all be deducted from our budget. So what I was unclear about, what I was looking for, because I, in my motion, was just ballparking spitballing numbers, I come up with, hey, if we could save 10% of our overtime, it would be $357,000. And I think what I was asking is, like Counselor Sola, how can we mitigate our overtime and save on the burnout? So next, I look at those items that are set out in Schedule A. Now, again, I have no idea. So all I'm wishing to do is prompt a expedition into creative thinking about what can we do to focus our work, save money on equipment, training, and response times. We've already discussed to infinite lengths the responses to medical calls, and that's something that will certainly have an effect. And I think if we have a lot fewer medical calls, I don't know what the effect is going to be, but I can only determine it would be a positive one. I think the same goes for auto extrication outside of our area. If we don't have to do that, and we're not being compensated to the full extent of cost recovery, including the kind of non-financial effect on the mental health and well-being of the firefighters, then we shouldn't be doing it. It's great if we can do it, but we're not obliged to do it. And so we should look at the restructuring, not of the fire department, but a restructuring of the services provided, the service areas we provided in, so that we can create a fire department that is focused and not run ragged by going to and fro from other calls that aren't really central, to use that word. So that's a long explanation of what I was thinking of. I, to be forewarned, I've drafted a motion for the next meeting that's kind of similar to that, and certainly the text of it might be of some assistance to you in answering that question or any response that you choose to give. And the purpose of that motion isn't so much to say, create work and say, I want these numbers and this analysis, but it's to communicate how I see the path forward being. The fire department is not the most expensive service we have, but it's up there. And if we can get the requisite safety concerns addressed by a department that is focused and has less expenditures on the extras, then I think we would have succeeded immensely in this progress. Thank you.
Thank you for that. There's a lot there, as you might appreciate. It's okay. Yeah, so just as a reminder that while last year we did get paged out for 46 structure fires, there's also motor vehicle fires, wildland fires. As you noted, the 150 motor vehicle incidents, which at a subsequent quarterly meeting, we'll break into which of those were road rescue and which were within city limits. And then there's, you know, obviously, the very large number of first responder calls. And yes, I would agree that if we were to reduce those first responder calls, we would be in a better place in many regards. If we were to reduce those road rescue calls, the rope rescue calls, and the list goes on. If we shrink down Schedule A, obviously with each one of those, the call volume decreases and the risk of burnout decreases, and there's many advantages that come with that. And I'm also, I guess, my role as I see it is to kind of educate and bring forward the information that I have so that council can make good decisions. And when I'm thinking about these things, I'm thinking about, you know, the motor vehicle accident that we responded to last night, which was 45 kilometers outside of town. And that was a family that was on the roof. And if it was my family, I would want nobody else but the Port Alberni Fire Department to respond out there because we're well-trained and well-equipped, and we're fast to get out there. Could somebody else do it instead of us? Probably. I think that could be something that could be explored. Will the patient outcomes change? Maybe. It depends on who you choose and how they wish to be compensated. And the same, I think, goes with the ongoing challenges that we have with the first responder program, is that undoubtedly, it takes up the lion's share of our calls. I think it ended up landing around 67%, 68% of our total call volume last year was first responder calls. And again, we showed up on multiple instances and made a real difference in someone's life, including just preserving their life, that they're alive today as a result of City of Port Alberni employees showing up expeditiously. And so that's always on my mind, and so I feel like I would be remiss to not bring that forward. And then I guess when I think about that core service of responding to structure fires, if we just look at that one item, so we need the four firefighters initially to respond, and then subsequently, we need, you know, at least another two to show up in reasonably short order and within 10 minutes, as per work safe rules, in order to stay within the building. And so if we're going to continue to do that at the service level that we are today, which is fully reliant on volunteer firefighters to make up those other two within 10 minutes, then there is still that fixed cost that's baked in, which, you know, if you look at, you know, if we just look at IRF plus wages, those two together represent 92% of the fire department's budget. And so unless we don't want to provide that same level of structural fire department service, then those costs are baked in regardless. And so certainly, you know, I am happy to take anything as directed away from this meeting, bring back good information so that council can make good decisions, and I'm happy to do so. I just thought that maybe I would, as a general response to your comments, just leave those as some points to consider.
Thank you very much. Other comments?
Well, I'll just follow up, I think, a little bit on some of the last comments that have been made. I am extremely concerned about the cost of the fire department and the portion of the budget that it takes up. And that said, I do not have suggestions of where to make a difference on that because the service is critically important for the safety of our community members. I think, though, you know, when we do talk about the very significant increase in number of calls and very much a getting away, breaking away of what the core service is and has always been, and I think what we've always paid for it for, it is concerning that that trend is going the wrong way. And, you know, I know we're being asked to fund more firefighters. I don't know where council's going to fall on that, but I can't support it at this point in time. So there's not, because there's not an end in sight to this, and while I appreciate Counselor Haggard's optimism that we've got good initiatives going that are going to make a difference in this, I don't think that they are going to make a difference. I hope that Counselor Haggard is right. I don't think that, I don't think that there's help coming for this issue. I think we're going to continue to have more medical calls. We're going to continue to put pressure on the system. Our firefighters are going to continue to be burned out. The service is going to continue to get more expensive, and at some point, there has to be some kind of solution because we always had a more expensive service than other communities, and now it's just not affordable anymore. I've been saying for years that at some point, the service would be too expensive for us to continue with it, and we'd end up reducing the level of service. And I, that's never what I've wanted to see, and I feel like we're now at a point where we're going to have conversations about if we want to reduce the service level. And I have to say very strongly, I do not want to reduce the service level. I value this service immensely and think it's one of the most important services that we provide as a city. I think the challenge is that we see this trend happening, and nobody really has any real answers on how to address it. And, you know, all the medical calls, like, I want somebody to attend every single one of those medical calls. However, I don't really ever want four firefighters attending them. It doesn't make sense. It's not a model that makes sense. I'm thankful and grateful that they do, and I don't want to make any further changes to that. But we know it's a misalignment of resources. And so, you know, we push to work with the province. I do think that those pushes will bring some mitigation to that, but I think it will be reasonably minimal. And even if we take away the medical calls, the cost of our fire service is not going down. So if we said we don't go to any medical calls, we might save $200,000. We still have a $5 million service. I, so I don't know what the answer is. I just want to express that I think we're in a very difficult position with this service right now. I just spent a bit of time quickly scanning through to see what do the fire departments cost in the regional district. I'm actually surprised they're more than I thought they were. Sprout Lakes is at $775,000. I can't remember the exact other ones, but, you know, pretty significant for their volunteer departments as well. I think, in my opinion, the numbers and conversations we have to start having are, is there a more efficient and more reasonable way to offer this service outside of just our automatic mutual aid agreements with the regional district, but rather a regional fire service? I know that we get a lot of benefits of that in how we function to I know that we get a lot of benefits of that in how we function together, but is there duplication of service being had? Are there opportunities to plan a bit more effectively and instead of all the departments purchasing their own trucks and having some overlap there? I know there is some collaboration, but ultimately, we are independent departments. And lastly, I think if we, you know, if we can't figure out a different way forward, I mean, I think at some point, we have to have the conversation about, are we an interior firefighting service? Or are we comfortable being exterior? I think the questions we have to ask to reasonably have that conversation is, we had 46 structure fires, how many of them required rescue? How common is it that people are trapped in buildings nowadays? I know that Port Alberni is a little bit, like, different in how our community has developed. I read somewhere recently that there's fewer people, because of the way house fires burn with newer building materials, they don't catch as quickly as they used to. And, you know, building code with fire, smoke alarms and stuff like that, it's less common that people are trapped in buildings and becoming more rare. However, I think Port Alberni does have a very old housing stock, and Port Alberni also has socioeconomic challenges that contribute to the potential of needing more rescue as well. But that's where, you know, I think we need to start asking questions. So if we have 46 structure fires, how often are we doing interior rescue? I think those are awful conversations to need to have. But as we've said with some of our other services, it can't just get increasingly, exponentially more expensive. We can't be asked for two firefighters this year and two more next year. We can't afford that level of service. So do we cut the level of service? Do we keep it where we're at? Do we have a real, serious conversation with the regional district and really start to look at what would the service look like if we operated as a true regional department? I don't know the answer to that, but I, I think it's time to start asking the questions. So I'm not making any formal motions on this today. I'm just, I think, really expressing that I'm concerned about the cost of this service and our ability to continue to sustain it. That's all. Council Haggard.
And yes, I am an optimistic person.
Me too.
Chief Owens, I'm sure we're not the only community going through this. So I don't know if the fire chiefs ever have regional meetings, but have you ever heard of any ideas that other communities might be trying or trying to do things differently? Or, you know, can you share anything that maybe other communities might be doing that might work for our fire department or to make it, instead of just always hiring firefighters to fill that role? Is there any other ways that we can look at doing this?
I could certainly look to see if there are other ways. Many fire departments, and I understand the financial situation that the City of Port Alberni is in, many, many fire departments are adding additional staff because that's where they found themselves at. And I couldn't speak to whether or not they're in a similar financial, overall financial situation as the City of Port Alberni is. I haven't heard of anything that has been a real jaw-dropping, wow, we need to adopt this and we'll be able to sustain our service with the same complement of folks that we currently have. I think that, in actuality, we've been doing some interesting things in really exercising that automatic aid agreement to its fullest extent, I would argue beyond what it was probably envisioned to do, to have those volunteer firefighters coming in and really becoming quite often our second on-scene apparatus. And so that has been a way that we've been creative in order to try to push us down the road a bit, and it helps in some situations and obviously not in others.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Council Mealy, would you read that motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move that the committee, the whole, receive the Fire Department 2025-2029 service level report and Fire Department response to financial plan motions dated January 13, 2025.
Thank you. Moved by Council Mealy, seconded by Council Dame, seeing no comments on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. And item number four, Development Services Department Service Level Report and Response to Financial Plan Motions.
So thank you, Madam Chair and Committee. So I think I'll just dive right into how the department took a look at the council's direction on where we might save, and also would then be very pleased to go over the previous service level report and answer any questions on that. But I will focus for now on a potential savings. We looked at our budget and are recommending that the committee recommend to council to consider deferring work to undertake a revised development cost charge bylaw and new community amenity charge bylaw from 2025 to 2026. The current financial plan had funding to hire consultant to assist staff in reviewing the current DCC bylaw and bringing that up to a new, modern standard with charges, and also look at the potential adoption of a new community amenity charge, which is now enabled by the province. The work for both of these bylaws would certainly greatly benefit from the master plans being complete in order to provide the most up-to-date information on how, on what to base the charges on those two bylaws would be. We also looked at a small amount of funding for consultants where we considered third-party review to assist in the potential third-party review of major development applications. Staff would be indicating or recommend that if such a third-party review was being considered, that the applicant be required to pay the entire cost and to remove that. So with those two changes, the 2025 Development Services consulting budget could be reduced Again, I'd be pleased to answer any questions on those or also go over the service level reports to provide council with any further information. But given all the time and stuff, I thought I'd focus on that and then just open it up to questions of the committee.
Thank you very much, Scott, and thank you for the report as well. It was well-written. Council Haggard.
When I first read the report, Scott, I thought, no, I don't like this. But then I thought more about it, because I'm very supportive of getting that work done. But when I thought more about it, I know how busy your department is, so you perhaps don't have the capacity to get that finished this year anyway. And as you said, it may be better to finish, do the work after we finish your OCP, and I think that's a priority right now. So I'll agree with your motion.
And sorry, one thing I didn't make clear is, this would begin in 2026. So it's a shift from 2025. The third-party reviews, I think we'd probably eliminate, but the DCCs and the amenity ones would be a deferral, but it does save money in this 2025 budget.
Thank you. Council Soltar.
Just a quick question, Scott, on the work that's backlog. How much files are we backlog? Because I don't see in the budget here. Maybe I'm just wrong, so maybe you can correct me. We are short of a planner. So is it allocated in the budget throughout the years? Because it doesn't look like it, and maybe I'm reading it wrong.
As was spoken to previously, when we know that we have, so you're correct, we've had a vacant planner two position for quite some time that has resulted in projects and applications taking longer to process than we would hope them to. But in the budget, when we know that there is a position, a full-time position, that we may not be able to hire, that is already accounted for in the budget, so at a reduced budget amount. So we make an estimate on that, and we've done that again this year, given negotiations are still going on. We're unlikely to fill that planner two position until we're able to offer a reasonable wage that is out there, and so that has been factored into this year's budget.
And just a quick question. So you have a lot of work on your desk, and I'm just saying for projects and that, how far are we, are we behind or are we on target? I mean, I know you need that planner, but...
Well, we're doing reasonably well on some of our development applications. Actually, just today, the manager of planning and our planner one position provided some details on our processing times this year in 2024, and we've improved quite a bit on our development permits and development variance permits. Now, some of that has to do with council's, the development procedures bylaw that then put those in the ability for staff to approve, so we've made some pretty good strides on that. And we have had not quite as many development applications in 2024 as previous years, where we have somewhat struggled in, as council is aware, the official community plan is taking longer than we had hoped, so there are delays in that. But we're doing the best we can with the resources we have. When we are at full complement, we hope to make real big progress. And then potentially, some of these, the study work, we'll be able to move at a more rapid pace.
Thank you. Council Petola.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know no motions have been made, but I thought I'd just jump in and echo Council Haggard's comments, that when I first read this report, I thought, ah, I don't know, cutting $136,000 from the DCCs is probably not a good idea. Unlike Council Haggard, I didn't change my mind. So it, there's a larger picture to be seen here, and that is, in listening to all of the service level reports, the thread that goes through them is, we have cut, past councils have really done a fairly good job in reducing excess to a point where there really isn't much fat left to cut. And so going forward, I think the option, the best option, is to find more revenues, not do less work, because I'm not really interested in cutting the service levels we currently have. I think they're pretty much at a minimum. So expenses increase, there's nothing we can do about that. I don't want our service levels to decrease anymore, so we have to raise some revenues. And constantly going to the taxpayers to raise revenues, I don't think is the right manner, because there are certainly assets that the city has that can be used to raise revenues, and that will offset having to ask the taxpayers to do that instead. So I see there are a number of sources of revenues that we can have, and DCCs and CACs are certainly one of them. I think they're a very important part. And as I go to other meetings, UBCM, I went to just a local leaders' meeting the other, last week, and these are things that are used widely by all other municipalities. And it's, when I first found out the level that we use CACs, I was quite surprised, and I'm still surprised. It's, we are, this is one of the areas that we're lagging behind other communities in a significant way. And so we do need to raise revenues. DCCs and CACs are one way to do it. There's certainly lots of other ways to do it. You know, things we've talked about and even suggestions that have been in the media, for lack of a better term, you know, naming rights on buildings, making sure penalties Anything, anything. I won't go on. But DCCs and CACs are an important part of that, and for the cost of just pushing it off a year and possibly having an increase in fees a year later, CPI in many event, I think we should stick with it this year if we can. Having said that, subject to whether or not having the OCP done or the master plan done has a significant cost impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we talk about naming rights again, I do just want to say that the city has put out multiple calls for naming rights on facilities. I know that people sometimes think there's like this giant market, and they often compare, like, Save On Food Center and cities, and not to say it's not something we could pursue, but as we have multiple times tried to get naming rights on facilities, it has been found to be reasonably unsuccessful, and the amount of revenue that it would bring in was very minor. And just in the time I've been on council, that's been two different attempts with different staff and at different points in time in the community. So not to say it's not worth it, but it's not going to make a lot of money. Council Petola.
And not to say I disagree with you on that. I was simply trying to tip my hat to Council Haggard and find something else to mention besides the campground.
Thank you. And really more just because it was brought up at the last committee of the whole meeting by a member of the public, and I hear people often speak about it, and it is something that we've tried. Scott, go ahead.
I guess, I 100% agree, the need to review our DCC bylaw, it's dramatically out of date. It was low at the time. And community amenity charges, that's a new type of bylaw, but a lot of communities have done things like that under a volunteer frame that we haven't done before. So I certainly recognize those are two important pieces of work that the city should do and can be an assistance to raise revenue. I would also say it will be, because especially the DCC bylaw is one of the few bylaws that the province must sign off on, and you have to be really strong to support the charges that are being proposed. And I think our master plans will be critical to help inform that work. And I would be remiss to say that, at current staffing levels, we will struggle to do that substantial work this year. That being said, if council so directs, we will do our best to engage a consultant and begin that work.
Thank you. Mike.
Thanks. And through the chair, I just also echo Scott's comments there. And just, we would probably be Q4 before we could start down that process. We would need enough of the infrastructure master plans to be forward so we have that good financial backing to take to the province, to show that what our five and outlay of projects are in what areas and how we're spending the funds. So although I agree 100% with Council Petola that it is outdated and needed, we do have to update our planning on the master plan process for our utilities, for our roadways, to make sure that we have that proper backing to put in a proper DCC plan moving forward.
Thank you. Council Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll make a motion if that's possible. Move that the committee, the whole, receive the Development Services Department 2025-2029 service level report and Development Services Department response to financial plan motions dated January 14, 2025.
Thank you. Moved by Council Mealy, seconded by Council Soltar. Any discussion on receipt? Seeing none on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the committee, the whole, recommend the council direct administration to reduce the 2025-2029 financial plan. Development services budget allocation by a total of $136,218 by deferring consulting work from 2025 to 2026.
Thank you. Moved by Council Mealy, seconded by Council Dame. Discussion, seeing none on the motion, all in favor. Motion carried. Thank you. Thanks, Scott. And item number five, Parks, Recreation and Culture Department service levels and response to financial plan motions.
At the December 9 regular meeting, council passed resolutions seeking adjustment to the levels of service, increases in revenues, cost savings, and a reduction to operational budgets related to 18 aspects of the Parks, Recreation and Culture Department. Information on each of those items is outlined in your agenda package on pages 121 to 130. In addition to that information, the level of service documents for each area of the department start on page 133. This information is from the level of service report that I provided the committee with on June 17 at the Committee of the Whole meeting, and it's in an updated format to match the template now used across the organization. To remind the committee, in municipal Parks, Recreation and Culture Departments, cost recovery typically ranges from 10% to 30%. As outlined on page 124 of the agenda, our current cost recovery is predicted As outlined on page 124 of the agenda, our current cost recovery is predicted to be at 25% for 2025. So in the spirit of efficiency, rather than going line by line from pages 119 to 160 in the agenda, I'd like to invite each of my department managers up in the order listed in the agenda to answer any specific questions that the committee has, if that's all right with you, Madam Chair. So first, covering our administration and programs would be our Manager of Recreation Services. And Madam Chair, does the committee have any questions about this area, either in the level of service document or in the initial information gathering that staff provided?
Thank you. Questions from council? No question. Oh, Councilor Dane.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Not a question, just a comment that I appreciate the thoroughness of the information in this report, and it makes it very, very clear, you know, what we might want to consider. So, thank you.
Councilor Petola.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wondering with regards to the remove maintenance in four parks line for 116,000, if there's any elaboration that can be done on that. I'm interested, is that from cutting positions, or if that's from simply reassigning service levels and saving by not having to go out to these parks and maintain them?
So, Madam Chair, welcome our Manager of Parks to speak to that item.
Good evening. Good evening, through the chair. Thanks for the question. So this reduction would be to reduce the services in these areas, whether it be So Mass, Paper Mill Dam, McLean's Mill, and those areas?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The question, more specifically, if we were to reduce services in those areas, does that imply that we're simply not renewing the work for people to do in those areas? I guess, are we cutting, are we cutting positions because those positions are dedicated to those parks? Or is, are those parks maintained through general positions that will basically be taken up with other duties elsewhere?
Thank you for the question. The duties would be lower level of service, so those positions would be moved elsewhere in the department, whether it's shrub maintenance, trail maintenance, any other of the current infrastructure that we take care of.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, the $116,000 that's quoted here in both parts of the, of the report, it says decrease service level in parks, and then separately it says stop maintaining parks outside of the city, but both are 116,000. So I guess just sort of similar to the last question, like, what does that actually look like if we stop? And then separately down, there's McLean's Mill. So first, I guess, is the 116,000 decreasing the level of service, or is it stopping that maintenance of parks outside of the city altogether? And then separately, we've got 62,000 for defund monitoring and maintenance of trees and landscaping at McLean's Mill, which I assume is included in the parks, unless it's included in the next one. But that one's kind of in there twice. So more clarity on what we're really talking about here in terms of impact.
Yeah, so there, it'd be identified twice in there, the 62 for the McLean's Mill, and then the 116 for the overall, for the parks outside the area.
But is it no more maintenance whatsoever, or decrease in level of service? Because in one line it says decrease the level of service, and the other line, they're both 116,000, but it says stop maintaining parks outside.
Yes, it would be no maintenance whatsoever.
Thank you. And I'm just curious then, I guess, next question, like, what type of maintenance are we currently doing at those spaces? So I assume it's probably pretty minimal at So Mass and Seaton, like, and the bulk is McLean's Mill, of course. And then how much maintenance really is there at Paper Mill Dam? Like, what type of, what type of impact are we talking about?
Thank you for the question. It would be a reduce of services for general maintenance around garbage, trees, painting, infrastructure, tree assessments, shrubs, and just general day-to-day checks, as well as inspections in all those spaces.
Thank you. Councilor Solda, and then Councilor Haggard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, you asked all the questions, but I just have one more question, is what about the safety in these parks? You know, there might be some safety concerns, so how would you address that if we stop? I mean, would you be driving through the parks just to make sure? How would that work? My biggest thing is safety.
Thanks for the question. So if we did reduce those services, it would be a request basis. So when we would get a request through general forums, we would then respond to any of the services that needed to be provided.
Okay, so on the park maintenance for McLean's Mill, is that not part of the contractor's position to do that? No, it's not by the looks with the mayor? Okay, so I'll end my question right there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Haggard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was not at the regional district meeting last week. Bernard de Saint Joseph was there. He was a very dedicated community manager that comes to a lot of our meetings, and he suggested to the regional district board that we have, the city has four parks located in the regional district, that perhaps they should look at taking over the maintenance of these parks. And I think that's a heck of a good idea. I think that's something that we should be pursuing. It's not going to happen immediately, but we needed to start, we need to plant the seed and start working towards that goal. Thank you.
Councilor Solda.
Actually, Joseph also suggested that they purchase it, or ask for it for free. So we'll just add to that. Thank you.
Mike.
Thanks. Through the chair, I just also would like to clarify on Councilor Solda's question about safety. Again, in natural spaces, if we were to treat a park as a natural space, we would have to set that service level and inform our insurer of that. So we do have natural spaces within the city, and once we deem an area a natural space, it is unmaintained, and people take the risk of going into that natural space. So there is a different level of service expected at that, and I just wanted to make sure that you were clear on that. It's not that we're waiving liability, or we're going down that route, but it would be considered more of a natural space.
Thank you. Councilor Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate that, and appreciate the report. Can I just get a little bit of information, a bit of more of a breakdown on the decrease in service level for horticulture? Because it says plant perennial flowers instead of annuals, but the proposed decrease is 439,000. When I go to the next one, it has eliminate pesticide spraying and remove all non-irrigated planters. But I would assume that part of that 439,000 would be job curtailment, is the great word for it, if I may?
So, Madam Chair, on page 121 of the agenda outlines, there was, when council had brought the motion forward, there was a discussion about the entire budget in horticulture being 439,000. And so staff went ahead and broke down those specifics. So you can see those budget, potential budget savings. Horticulture specifically, there are five items itemized on page 122 of the agenda. Further to Councilor Mealy's question, yes, of course, if we're, if we're looking at savings in the six figures, rest assured that would be looking at an impact to our human resources, absolutely.
Thank you. Other questions, comments?
I guess I still have a couple of questions on the park maintenance piece. I feel like we, McLean's Mill is sort of the exception right now, because we have a contract in place to maintain it. Of that potential $116,000, how, what portion of it is our maintenance on McLean's Mill versus the other three parks?
McLean's Mill would be probably over half of that 116,000.
Okay, thank you. I think that generally answers the question then. Okay. Any other questions for Manager of Parks? Okay, seeing none. Councilor Mealy?
We have more included in the report still, but just for this manager.
Madam Chair, then I would welcome our Manager of Culture to come forward to speak to those items. And Madam Chair, if the committee has any, any questions specific to culture would be ideal at this time.
The game today is identify the correct manager for your question. All right, questions for the Manager of Culture? All right, I'll ask questions. Councilor Petola, go ahead.
Thank you. Don't want to steal your thunder, Madam Mayor. I unfortunately listened to the radio and various news reports, and I was listening to a analysis of museums across North America, and the statistic that I heard was less than, often with museums, less than 1% of their artifacts are actually on display. And that museums struggle with having donations made to them, so they have a vast quantity of artifacts that they may or may not have wanted in the first place, but then have to incur the free cost of maintaining them. That's what happens when people give you stuff. I'm wondering in, along those lines, if our museum is in a similar situation, and as a result, if there is a availability to, I don't know what the right word is, but I guess sift through the collection and dispose of artifacts that are deemed by greater minds than mine unnecessary, or duplicative, or something along those lines. And certainly that question includes artifacts within the industrial heritage collection as well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the question. Still learning. The collection at the Alberta Valley Museum is a visible, visible storage. So the vast majority of the objects you see, that is what the exhibition is. And that is for the stuff that is at Echo, that is for the stuff at McLean's Mill, and that is for the stuff primarily at the industrial heritage. So you are correct that there is, across North America, a very small percentage is usually on exhibit. Here, previous administration has made sure that that's not the case. I would say that there is probably less than 10% that you're not actually seeing. Now, what you may not be aware is that I think people think that there is the stuff at the heritage, and there's stuff at the mill, and there's stuff at the museum. What you may not be aware of, you actually have five separate collections that are owned by the city. And you also have six repository agreements with outside entities. And what does that mean? We have entered into agreements with the Nations, Parks Canada, for things that we are the caretakers of, but we don't own. So let me speak to the collections that we do own. There are five. The Alberta, Alberta Valley Museum's collection, it's a mixed collection, so there's everything from artwork to archaeological items. There are items from the First Nations, there are human remains. It spans the gamut. We also have, like you've pointed out, the stuff that is at the Industrial Heritage Center. Not everything down there is owned by the city, but the majority of it is. And that is the type of collection that you imagine it to be. We do have a room full of objects down there that have not been accessioned, and I've made it my personal goal in 2025 to deal with that room. But for the most part, the things that are at the industrial heritage collection, they are accessioned, and they are part of the collection. We also have numerous things at the mill. There are buildings, everything from buildings to what has been labeled landscaping, ephemera. There is plenty that we could do at the mill in terms of cleaning up what's there. There is a cost involved for that, though. Okay? We also have a public art collection, a lot of it's in this building, and art is an appreciating asset. We could do better at actually keeping track of that, and that is another goal that I've set for ourselves. You also have something that is archaeological material that was identified through excavations of city buildings. They're from fish wears. And so we have a lot of archaeological material from that, that there really is no idea of what the provenance is, which nation are these artifacts from, whose human remains these are. We are the repository from it. We have a little bit of DNA information on it, but we do not have a strong direction as to who actually these objects belong to. So that's the stuff we own. Now there's, like I said, six agreements of stuff that we don't technically own, and this also spans the gamut. You've got everything from artwork done by survivors of the residential schools, that is under our care. You have archaeological collections that could be Seashot, could be Huapatcheset. They're still figuring that out, but they do also have human remains in them. You also have Huayt, other collections from the Seashot, other collections from the Huayt. And you have two separate agreements with Park Canada, and those Parks Canada agreement also have indigenous objects. It is vast, and it is complicated. So you're probably surprised when I put in the report that it would be a 10-year project at least to wade through this. I stand by that, just by the sheer complexity of what is actually in the collection.
Thank you. Wasn't expecting all that, but really, really informative. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Solda.
Wow, I've been here for a long time. I never heard about all the complexities. So yeah, that was really interesting. Thank you. But I do have a question. When you talk about the collection at the mill, what are we referring to? And is there, are they from the day one of McLean's Mill when it evolved, or it's just been put there?
Thank you for the question. Again, it's a bit of a mixed bag. There are artifacts that are from the original family. There is also stuff that was brought to the mill of the era, and you have everything from like, you know, buildings to actual machinery. And then, of course, like, things usually organically happen. There's been added to, added to, added to. And then there's also, I was just out there, there are, how should we say, members of the public adding to it daily. So it spans the gamut. There is room to clean up out there. But I would have to say, having been out there, I was very impressed with what our partners at the Chamber of Commerce have done with the resources they have out there. I think they've done a great job. I think we can work with them better to streamline it, and perhaps bring some focus around it. But there will be a cost implication to that, because the stuff isn't small, and the stuff to dispose of it, there will be a cost associated with that.
So just to follow up. So when we look at a cost associated to it, do we have an idea ballpark, or is that just something we would have to come back? And the stuff for disposing, is it bigger equipment, smaller equipment?
This is an educated guess. I would think we'd probably take better part of the year to identify objects that could be removed and disposed of. A lot of them... A lot of them are larger and a lot of them are smaller. I have no idea how expensive it would to remove that stuff and whether there is a secondary market for it or whether it's recyclable. I don't know.
Thank you, Counselor Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate that. Appreciate the report. Thank you very much. And just wanted to say to, through you and Ms. Perry, just appreciate the willingness to take on these tasks. You're more than welcome, counsel, to come to a Heritage Commission meeting. They are discussed every meeting pretty much on what's there and what we can do because Ms. Perry's been really spearheading that, which is great. And a lot of that, too, the artifacts, just for a little bit of background, too, a lot of artifacts that we have from neighboring First Nations would like to have it back in the hands of the neighboring First Nations. However, they don't have the ability to take care of those artifacts the way the museum can, and that's why they are still there at the museum. I'd just like to go, just have a question on reducing, reduced budget in museum. The middle one, the one at $31,500 is reducing operating hours. Current five days a week, but closing an hour early, reduce cleaning and maintenance. As an educated guess, would this affect the school programs and the students coming through during the day? And I think that's a big question for me because I just want to make sure that the students and the youth in the community still have access when we have, you know, field trips and such.
Thank you for the question. Out of all of the options up there, that one is the least disruptive because at 4 o'clock, school's let out.
Thank you. Appreciate the information that's come forward in this report for options. I have addressed concerns with the museum budget many times over the years. I am still, I think, just, none of these options really, in my opinion, are a real service level change. So I don't think we've really gotten to where we need to be at this point. With some quick research, the city of Parksville spends $65,000 a year on their museum. The city of Campbell River spends $60,000 a year on their museum. The city of Courtney spends $180,000 a year on their museum. And I should say, it is the most incredible museum I've ever been in for a similar-sized municipality. We spend $439,000 a year net of our revenues on our museum. So we have a fantastic museum, but this is insane. We cannot spend that level on our museum excluding McLean Mill and all of the other heritage investments that we have. And other municipalities have other heritage investments as well. That is just the spending on museums. Eight or nine years ago, we had a report brought forward to us by Teresa Kingston that highlighted the models that other municipalities of similar sizes to ours, both on the island and off the island, used for their museums. And we were, I think, one of like 20 municipalities that had a full staffed model at our museum. Every other museum was utilizing mainly volunteers with some very minimal staff support. I think we are just, again, we are just out of line with the level of service that we have here and the budget challenges that we have as a community. It is not that the museum is not doing an incredible job. I don't think anyone would argue that they're not doing an incredible job. We have a fantastic museum. The level of service that we're offering is out of line with the current ability of our community. And it's extremely out of line with what other municipalities are spending on their museums. So yeah, we can cut an hour. We can reduce to, I don't know, four days a week. It looks like we're currently open six days a week. I'm not clear on how open four days a week saves $34,000 only. I don't have all of the information, but this is probably the third or fourth time I've asked for a really thorough picture of where, how, what, how the numbers are made up of the museum. So I hate to keep picking on the museum, but I would say it is a, it's an area we are spending significantly more than other municipalities. And that is just on the museum because we have significant other heritage investments as well. So I don't have a specific ask at this point in time. I know that these are not, you know, easy decisions. I guess I'm asking counsel to consider if this is the priority area for our municipal tax dollars or if we need to consider. I don't think that just, you know, reducing the hours does it. I don't think that without a larger plan for what we want the service to be, we should just cut a minimal amount of hours. I think we need to do a review. I mean, bring back the report from eight or nine years ago. I tried to find it and I couldn't because our agendas weren't searchable at that time. But I'm sure we have it. And I think we need to do, have a better look at what municipalities are doing and paying for, for municipalities or for museums versus how much we're continually spending.
So, Madam Chair, just wanted to speak since you brought up the Campbell River Museum, just to ensure we're all on the same page. So of their, in 2023, of their $1.13 million budget, they were actually received over $339,000 from their tax base. So also staff are, of course, happy to bring forward whatever information counsel or the committee wishes. I think what this budget savings that's specific, the slide that's up on the screen there, the page, is this idea of just closing up shop if it were or closing the museum's doors. As our manager of culture has outlined, it's not as simple as, you know, it's a decade-long process. It's not something, unlike other areas where we may have the ability to just shut the doors and stop the costs. It is not the case as our manager of culture has outlined. So of course, staff are happy to bring back whatever information the committee or council's looking for. And also, again, wanting to make sure we're on the same page as far as what investments are being made. I think counsel might be a little surprised at the, that financial investment that's being made in other communities is significant.
And no one's suggesting closing up shop on the museum. So that hasn't been said, and I think it's important that it's not suggested in any way that it's been said. My questions are why our museum costs so much more than other museums. I do note your number from Campbell River. And when I looked through their budget, and it was the 2024 proposed budget, a significant portion of that was a capital investment and not an operating budget. So I am looking specifically at operating budgets, but I could be wrong. Still, even if it's $100,000, even if it's $330,000, it's still $100,000 less than we're spending. But I believe, capital aside, it's $300,000 less than we're spending. So it, this is just an area that I think we have just, we've done what we've always done. And we've invested in the service because we care about it. And I have to wonder if there is a more affordable way to offer this service. Do we have volunteers who, I know we have volunteers who come in and help with exhibits sometimes. Are volunteers permitted to work at our museum to keep it open, for instance? Because I know that is a model that other municipalities use.
The, we do have a substantial volunteer base at the museum. The archives is run solely by. So in the last year alone, we've had over 2,200 hours of volunteerism at the museum. And for a community value of in excess of $76,000. So to speak to your question about reducing hours of operation, of one hour a week. We are a small staff of five people. You have three FTEs. These are people that do not sit at the front desk. These are people that look after the collections, they design the programs, and they run the museum. So when you reduce it one hour a week, you're basically saving on visitor services staff. You're not saving on permanent staff. So the reason that your savings are not as perhaps you would have thought, it's because your visitor services staff are casual and they work just the hours that we're open. So that's the reason.
Thanks, that's helpful. Yeah, I mean, I think my ultimate question remains, why is our museum so much more expensive than everyone else's? And it, I don't have all of the current numbers. But I mean, this question does go back many, many years. And when we had that initial report, we were an extreme outlier. Not to say that some municipalities may not have changed how they're offering the service since then. And my quick numbers on budgets are not extensive and not a full look at the whole picture. So recognizing that completely. But I continue to, I mean, Mike will note that last budget, I asked for numbers around the museum and we were not able to get them before the budget was passed. So I continue to be in a position where I don't have all of the information on the museum. And I mean, I guess maybe I'd like to start with seeing the report from, I'm going to guess it was late 2015, written by Teresa Kingston. And it was really just an overview of museum services in comparable communities and the staffing models. And it was a really good thorough report and it did lead to a lot of discussion in the community. It led to a really fantastic process, actually, that Teresa led. And then it led to a recommendation that we should share our museum service with the ACRD and Seashot and Huapachet, which was basically a suggestion that we should share the cost with them and continue to offer the service as we wanted. And there wasn't a buy-in from the ACRD for that, so it didn't move forward. So I think it just fizzled from there. But from my perspective, the desire to really explore that, how the service is being run, hasn't fizzled. We just haven't gotten back to it. So maybe we could start with Mike if we're able to find that report and send it out to counsel. And then counsel can determine from there if they want to take any further steps. Any final questions? Okay. Okay. Then Counselor Mealy, I think now you can make your motion. No? Now I'm skipping people?
Madam Chair, I'd like to welcome our manager of facilities forward, our final department manager, to answer any questions the committee might have.
My apologies for almost missing one of our most important employees. Any questions for Rob?
Counselor Hager.
I have some questions regarding the operational budget for the multiplex. Are you the right person to ask?
I will do my best.
All right. What are building user charges? It's your second line item for revenues? Do we need Sean?
I spend money, he makes money.
Okay. Page 154. Building user charges, it's on page 154 and it's the second line item for revenues. Account number 14718.
Thank you for the question. So this would be specific to user groups renting ice. Could be floor rentals, so lacrosse in the dry season.
So it's different from ice rental revenue then? Because I noticed your ice rental revenue is down $84,000, but your user charges, building user charges are significantly higher than projected. So it kind of almost offsets, but not quite?
I would suspect that we've got some money going into the wrong account where the ice rental money was going into the builder user charges. We probably don't, we definitely don't make $72,000 in lacrosse and other non-ice rentals. So it's something I can look into and clean up for 2024 and make sure that moving forward in 2025, that revenue was going into the correct account.
Okay. One more question. I have a question about the concession. It looks like your revenues were higher, actual revenues are higher than your projections, which is fantastic. But if you look at the cost for the concession stand, it looks like there is a loss. So I'm wondering if you've been able to review why that loss occurred and what steps you're taking to ensure that there isn't a loss in the concession stand moving forward. I don't think the concession stand would be a huge moneymaker, but my expectation is that it should at least try and achieve a break-even point.
So in 2024, we did have a really good season for the Bulldogs. And so there was definitely approximately six or seven extra games in the season that were probably $12,000 to $15,000 per game. We don't anticipate that every year, but it's, and also every year, but we're hopeful.
Thank you. Counselor Mealy.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. So just going back to the building user charges. So I guess the question is, well, there was a get-together for Bobby McKenzie this year, and that wasn't really an ice rental. But would that be under ice rental revenue or would that be under building user charges?
That would definitely be under building user charges. Yep.
Any other comments? Counselor Petola.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to follow up on Counselor Hager's question. Even with the extra games, it still appears from adding up the concession, upper, lower, income, revenue, and balancing that against the supplies for the concession, the upper concession and the wages and benefits for the concession. Even in 2024, where we had a great year, we're still $25,000 loss. So does it make sense to run a concession if we're losing money so people can have hot dogs?
So, Madam Chair, just to give context to the committee, the concession stand staff are, that's work that's typically performed by bargaining unit members, is quite a unique model compared to any other facility that I'd be aware of in private enterprise or other communities. You wouldn't typically see our staffing model that we have in place, which is, that's the resulting, the resulting loss that we've had at the multiplex.
Thank you. Counselor Hager.
Just as a follow-up to that then, I realize that we do have employees that are certified in the union and there is a collective agreement and we have to pay them accordingly. But as a result of that, can we maybe look at things like simplifying the menu? Is there things that we can look at increasing the charges? You know, instead of paying a dollar for a hot dog, maybe we charge $2 for a hot dog. I don't know, but I just think that we shouldn't be losing money on a concession stand. So I think we need to look at options on how we can try and even that loss out a little bit. If you could do that, I would be very happy.
Madam Chair, those are items that staff have looked at, of course, previously. It's, the numbers are quite glaring. If counsel has a specific level of service or a cost recovery that you're looking. So for instance, if the direction from counsel is to break even on the service, that's something that staff can explore further, would of course result in some significant changes to either menu offerings or also the price point for each item as well. There, of course, will be a saturation point where looking at the cost to consume concessions, fans, at some point, we will, of course, hit a wall where fans are not prepared to spend that cost. However, if that's the direction of counsel, of course, staff are happy to look at that.
It's like when you go to a movie, you pay $10 for a bag of popcorn, but you always buy the popcorn.
Thank you. And just want to note that I know that the losses at the concession have, I think, come down quite a bit over the last five years or so. So I think we are absolutely moving in the right direction. I know some changes have been made there. My preference would be definitely that we budget for no loss and that we put together a plan that is, can we actually make that happen reasonably or not? As much as I think it is a normal food services business and there has to be an ability for that to break even. I think the challenge, of course, is that our wages are I think the challenge, of course, is that our wages are likely not the same as a normal food services business would be. Although there's also no lease cost associated, so that should balance out to some extent. Anyways, I think that council can make that change in the budget if needed, and we could certainly ask for more information back on, on what the impacts may be. Any other questions? Counsel Solda.
Being in the food industry for so many years, I would agree with Counsel Hager. And before, in a restaurant, I did concessions, so we broke even. And it's just inventory and stuff like that. So I do think that we should be either breaking even or making a profit out of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, Counsel Amelia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Moved that the committee of the whole received the Parks, Recreation and Culture Department 2025-2029 Service Law Report and Parks, Recreation and Culture Response to Financial Plan motions dated January 13, 2025.
Thank you. Moved by Counsel Amelia, seconded by Counsel Dame. Seeing no comments on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. Thank you. Thank you very much, Vela. No correspondence, so on to new business. Item number one, Fire Department, 2025 Capital and Staffing Financial Plan Implications.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So before you are two reports, which you'll recall appeared at the December 9 Committee of the Whole. During that meeting, I think there was some good dialogue back and forth, but it was ultimately decided that it would be most appropriate for these to come to a subsequent committee of the whole. And here we are. So remaining out of that initial capital ask, if you recall, there was the addition of $50,000 in 2025 from taxation for a functional study and design to renovate the fire hall to address daily operations, growth, health and safety, gender requirements, and equipment storage. I would say the main highlight that I want to convey here again on this one is, one of the things that this will do will allow the Portle Bernie Fire Department to design a building that protects our employees from carcinogens. And so the building was obviously built in, or opened in 1967, and carcinogens were not top of mind at that time. This allows for firefighters, a well-designed fire department allows for firefighters to come in with their dirty carcinogenic laden equipment, lay that down in what's known as a red zone, the contaminated zone. They then move into a yellow zone, which is kind of a semi-contaminated, where you're able to clean that equipment off. And then you have the green zone, which is, you know, where members of the public would typically be and where folks can kind of go about doing their daily business without worrying about persistent exposure to carcinogens. And so that's not the way the building is, is currently built. It is all new fire halls, they're certainly built that way. And as we try to lower our carcinogen exposure, this is a vital piece of that, that puzzle. The next up here was the mixture of the $49,436 from the local government climate action program, mixed in with the $60,564, which was already allocated from IRF to purchase an electric vehicle to replace the 2011 Chevy Silver Auto. This is just a case of that these vehicles were typically envisioned to be approximately a 13-year vehicle. The difference, I would say, again, between the fire department and other departments is that when we have incidents, there's an expectation that we're able to have, you know, the most reliable vehicle, because if it doesn't operate, then we don't get to where we need to be expeditiously, which we've already, you know, just spoken about, how every person that we can get on scene expeditiously matters. Then number three, which was the Starlink, was referred to the ACRD. The turnout gear, as you remember, was approved at the January 13 regular council meeting. Number five was the additional, addition of $400,000 from taxation to replace a fire hall roof, as per the facility assessment report. We have done some additional work on this, and kudos to Rob in Facilities, the facilities manager, and worked with a roofing contractor. We were able to, we anticipate the spend to be approximately $5,500, which we've taken the liberty and already approved out of our existing operating budget, which should push the roof replacement into 2027 at least. And so that's there for your consideration. And then, as you'll recall, at the last regular council meeting, there was the deferral approved for the replacement of Rescue 8. That motion was split, and then there was the $350,000 in 2025. And, and it's not on your agenda. So I'm trying to remember now if that was something that required an additional report. Okay. So happy to answer any questions on the, the capital requests there first.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments? Counsel Amelia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Chief, on item two for the local government climate action program and the IRF contribution for the replacement. To qualify for that program funding, does it have to be electric, or can it be a hybrid vehicle?
I'm hearing from people wiser than I that it can be hybrid.
Other questions? Counsel Solda.
It's not a question, but it's just like, when I look at this and I'm going, wow, a lot of things happening in 2025 for the fire department. And I look at the $400,000 and, you know, like, can we get more time? And, you know, I just see the stretch. So I'd just like to take some of that and move it, you know? Because this 2025 is going to be a, a big stretch, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Agreed completely, and it does sound like the $400,000 is not being requested in this year. I heard 2027. Counsel, oh, I completely agree, and it's, it's a challenge, and I know the fire department knows that. I'm going to, I guess, first I'll, I'll ask, on the functional study, what would be, do we have a, I know that we generally do a study to get a budget, but $50,000 seems like a very high amount of money to do a study on one building. So could you speak more to, I guess, what we would get from the study? And then if we have a general, a rough idea of what type of renovation cost we're looking for? Because I, as much as I know, we would get a firmer idea from the study. I have a hard time doing studies if we don't have an expectation that we're going to be able to afford the renovation. And I also want to note that our fire department, while I go around the island, and Counsel Hager and I were just driving to a conference the other day and noting all of the very beautiful, very expensive, brand-new fire departments on Vancouver Island. I think we probably have one of the older ones, and it is in fantastic condition, has been maintained very well. And so recognizing that that does come with cost, and I'm not at all opposed to spending money to keep that building going so that we don't have to build a new fire department. I just want to make sure if we're going to do a study, we have intention to fund the work. Because if we're going to push the work out five years and then have to update the study because it's outdated, then I don't think it's the best use of our funds to do the study right away.
Yeah, thank you for that question. And, and yes, kudos to fire departments present and past for really their, their ownership and caretaking of that building. And, and yeah, we're not here nowhere in the five-year plan. And if we were looking at a 10-year plan, is, is a fire hall appearing there? And that's because it's been, it was well-spec, I would say, and it's been well taken care of. With regards to the study, certainly what my ask when we were looking for budgetary numbers was something that we could then act on. So something that comes essentially with drawings with it, that then we could give to the contractor that was going to execute the work, and they could utilize those drawings. I'm not a subject matter expert in renovations, and, and I, I think that I will refrain from trying to give you a number as to what the actual renovations would cost, because it would, it would only be a guess at this point for me.
Thank you. Then counsel, I think I'm going to move that we add $50,000 to the 2026 budget from taxation for a functional study and design to renovate the fire hall to address daily operations, growth, health and safety, agenda requirements, and equipment storage. Thank you, seconded by Counsel Solda. And I, I just want to state that I do think we are going to need to do this work. I just don't want us to be in a position to do the study and then not be ready to do the work. And I've seen that happen several times, where a study's been done, and then the actual work itself has been pushed out, you know, three, four, five plus years. And then the study that we've spent money on becomes irrelevant, and we need to refresh it. I think if we push it out a year, ideally, we would fund it, do it next year, and then be able to move forward with the renovations in the 2027 budget. So I just want to make sure that if we're funding a study, we're funding it with intention in short term to actually execute on the renovations. And I just don't see us being ready to do that in 2026. Other comments? Counsel Amelia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate those comments, and I would be willing to support it if it's not in this year. I just, I, I mean, we, we have an immense amount of resources within that building, meaning the people that work there. Also, we have our own HR and health and safety as well. So I guess the question I have is, 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 could not part of this or most of this be done by the people that actually work in there to tell us, you know, you know, where the equipment storage needs to be? And then with HR, address daily operations, growth, health and safety? Those are things that I believe we have people within the city that could do that work already. So, so I don't mind putting in the budget, Madam Mayor, for, for a following year, and we can, we can address this again. But, I mean, I think this is just a, a prime example, too, of we have the experts sitting within the building, both management and staff and, and union employees. And I think we can come to the table and, and address some of these things without a full study.
Thanks, I think that's a great suggestion. And Chief can respond as well, but I assume a big portion of the cost of that is like the architectural drawings to actually do the renovations, given that it is an old, old building. But Chief, go ahead if you wanted to add more to that.
Yeah, certainly, I think that our staff has already undertaken a lot of that, that work. And so you'll find, you know, a lot of the dirty gear is situated as close to a certain bay door as possible, and it's clean in those spaces. We are at a place where we need to, you know, as an example, there are no shower facilities on the first floor. And so as you come in and, you know, you're, you're covered in carcinogens, you need to walk through what would become the green zone in, you know, whatever attire you can muster in that moment up to where the showering facilities are. And that's just, it's not appropriate in a modern fire service. And I, and I get, in 1967, it probably just wasn't thought of. But, but yeah, a lot of that, that, the low-hanging fruit has already been gathered. And now we're talking about things that we, we really do require professionals in order to, to execute.
Thank you, that's super helpful. Counsel Dame.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess as this ask is for the 2025 budget, it could be assumed that the, the, the study would come within the next calendar year, and the, then there would be a further ask for that renovation the following year? I'm just wondering, surely there's an idea of, of what the hopeful timeline is for this? And I'm, I'm wondering if the renovation is something that the, the department is, is hopeful will happen in 2026, 2027, if there's an idea for that?
I think when we're talking about, you know, what we're talking about here is our employees that we ask to enter into carcinogenic environments. And then we want to protect them as best as we can. And so, you know, obviously, it's as soon as possible. Every day that's delayed is another structure fire of exposure that, that we're not mitigating in, in that manner. You know, we did just approve the PFOS-free gear, and that's certainly assistance in, in lowering that carcinogen exposure. This is a, a big next step that, that really needs to happen. And so it's, it's really just about exposure time.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, so motion is moved and seconded, and for clarity, it is to, to add it to the 2026 budget. So not this year, but next year for the renovation. Any, not seeing any further comments on the motion, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Counsel, would anyone like to make the second motion? Counsel Amelia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to just make a, a little change to it, too, just open it up a bit. I move that we allocate $49,436 in 2025 for the local government climate action program funding to the existing $60,564 from the Equipment Replacement Reserve Fund to purchase and equip an electric or hybrid vehicle to replace the 2011 Chevy Silver Auto 4x4.
Thank you, is there a seconder? Seconded by Counsel Petola. Counsel Amelia.
Sorry, I just want to speak on that just really quickly. I just think it just opens it up, so we're not pigeonholed into an electric vehicle. A gas, electric, hybrid could also be a good choice for us as well. So as long as it doesn't affect the funding, I think it just opens up the possibilities for the fire department to look at.
Thank you. Counsel Solda.
So a quick question, what will happen to the 2011? Will it go to auction, or is it planning to stay in with the fire department or with the city?
I would say typically, I'll speak to what happened with the last vehicle, the last light vehicle that we replaced, is that we traded it in and used that trade-in value to offset the cost of, of that unit. Certainly, if council has other direction or wants staff or administration to explore another option, then, then certainly, I'm sure staff are open to that.
I'm, I'm fine with that if you're going to trade it in, but I don't know if you'll get your value if you don't. I'm sure Counsel Amelia could have a few words to say about that. And second is, one more question regarding the charging station. I know if, if you get a hybrid or electric, depends what you have. I know you can just plug it in and that. Will we have to come back in, add anything? I know on mine, I have to, I have a, my Cars has it, so I'm charging. So I'm just kind of curious to know.
I know that when staff were briefing me on this, they had indicated that there is power in the, the two stalls where, where the chief's vehicle and deputy chief's vehicle reside. Now that's 110 power that's there, and so that would be a slower charge. I, I don't know off the top of my head if that would be adequate, if it was to be in that position and charging, you know, most of the day in that spot. But it's a valid question. I apologize, I don't have a full sin answer.
I just know that I had to upgrade my power at my home, and I actually bought the Cars model charging station, so it's not just a, any plug. So that's important to note.
Thank you, Counsel Amelia, and then Counsel Petola.
Thank you, Madam, appreciate that. So I'll just piggyback on the Counsel Soldas. So 110 on our typical So 110 on our typical hybrid or electric vehicle, it could take you 16 hours to charge. If you go 220, you could probably charge it overnight. But chances are what we would probably need in an electric vehicle for the city is a fast charger to ensure that the fire department can get in and out. I'd also like to say that I'd like us to look at repurposing the Silverado. I know in talking to different people in the community, I'm just going to throw out, the community policing was said, oh, we might be looking for a vehicle. And I said, well, do you like red? I don't know. It's, so, and don't get me wrong, I agree with the trade-in. If we're going to get a good amount of money out of the trade-in, totally understand. But if we can repurpose it in another city department, I think it's still valuable and it still has a lot of life left in it for non-emergency use.
Yeah, agree completely on that. Counselor Petola?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm sure administration will investigate all cost-saving plans and with, with what charging rates they need. I, I think I got a better car than Counselor Solda because my electric car has a level one charger and it's never let me down. And I drive, I drive from, from Coombs to Port Alberni on a regular basis. So, yeah, I think we can just leave it to the people that are doing the job. Thanks.
Thank you. As long as the cost of the chargers is included in this budget request and there is not an additional budget request associated with needing to purchase this. So if someone could clarify that, or if not, you could bring it back to, add it to the budget Q and A, I think would be fine. Just if there's an additional cost that is not associated here, then we should know that. Counselor Solda?
Just a quick response. I did get a rebate on my charger from B C Hydro. So I don't know if it applies to the city or anything like that, or if they have it.
Counselor Mealy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to go back to the reason why I put hybrid in as well is there's, there's options out there that don't require a charger, especially a truck's F-150 is a good example. And you have a 7.2 kilowatt generator in the back, which would be very helpful in an emergency situation as well. So, so there are hybrid options out there that don't require a charger, but we'll still give you pretty good gas mileage and, and good use.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay. Motion is moved and seconded. Not seeing any further comments on the motion. All in favor. Carried, none opposed. Thank you. And I'll go to the chief for the rest of the report.
I, moving on to the staffing report then. Yes. So the, again, this was brought forward at the December 9 meeting, a fair amount of conversation. We've also had some conversation today with regards to staffing needs. What you will see up on the screen and was the light item that was submitted is some more accurate numbers as they pertain to what the staffing asks would cost. If you'll remember, somebody gave the fire chief the, the ability to manipulate the spreadsheet last time. I think I did an okay job, but not a 10 out of 10 job. The Director of Finance came back and he, he thankfully fixed it for me. Yeah. So before you, we do have right now, the 2025 ask is for the administrative support position, which is a 0.6 position to start in Q2. And then again, the, the two firefighters to start in Q4 with then their total cost appearing in 2026. And so perhaps I'll open it up to any questions.
Thank you. Questions, comments? None? Motions? Counselor Solda?
Madam Mayor, oh, sorry. How about if I press that button? Okay. Madam Mayor, I noticed that the mechanic has been taken off and I'm, and I'm just kind of curious to know why. Because that one time, the firefighter that's, we're as, working as mechanic could become full-time. How does, how has that changed? I'm just kind of curious. Am I missing that?
The recommendation for the mechanic was for the can, the mechanic to move from their shift work, two days, two nights, four off position to a straight days. So they would then be backfilled by one of the two positions that are asked for within the report.
Counselor Dame?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I don't have a question so much as, as just a comment that this is, as you said earlier, really difficult. We are, as everybody knows, in a tough position and increasing department budgets right now is, is, is a hard, hard decision. And I very much see the value in this. And, and it's also hard that we just, you know, made a motion to push forward a, a health and safety issue to a future year. But then we're considering, you know, putting money towards more staffing and it's, you know, it becomes a, a challenge to try to think through the priorities. What's, what's the most important thing? If we can't do all of them right now, what are the things that we can and should be doing now? So, um, yeah, I, I think I'm just expressing, you know, some, some frustration at the challenge that we're, we're working through right now. So I think that I'm going to have a really hard time supporting additional positions. And I would need, you know, just, just to really be convinced of the necessary nature of that. So, yeah.
Thank you for those comments. And, and I fully do appreciate. I will just note as one of the alternatives is to push the positions out from the 2020, sorry, 2025 year into the 2026 year. And, and perhaps I'll just make this comment is that we've talked already about burnout that our personnel are, are experiencing. And we've talked about, you know, the folks that are unwilling to fill overtime shifts when they're available because they're feeling those, those, that burnout. And so I just wanted to inject that, you know, I think that folks can endure a lot if they see that there's hope, that there's change coming. And so I would just inject that as, as something to consider that I, I realize that 2025 is a immensely tough year from a budgetary perspective. It continues to be a tough year for, for our personnel that we have. Those examples that I've given are appropriate to share in open council. And there's many other signs and symptoms that our folks are experiencing that wouldn't be appropriate. And so, yeah, just, just food for thought to consider some of the alternatives that are there.
Thank you. And I think your comments absolutely make a lot of sense. And I think that the challenge that the fire department is dealing with is not lost on council. Obviously we've had a lot of discussions here already about how we can reduce that burden on the fire department. We've made the minor change to medical calls. I think in reality, and I said this in a radio interview this week, the reality is the burnout is probably largely in what I hear from firefighters as a result of a significant amount of overdose calls that our firefighters are going to. That's certainly not the only burnout that exists. But I know I have heard from several firefighters who that is the burnout that they're feeling is repetitive nature of going to overdose calls. Not at all that they don't want to be going to those overdose calls, but how depressing that work is. And the reality that it is not the work that they thought that they were getting into. The world has changed. We have a, a crisis, an absolute emergency in the opioid crisis. And our fire department is, our firefighters are keeping people alive who need to be kept alive. And I think we're all very grateful. And I know that they recognize the importance of that work that they're doing. But I, I do think like we haven't really talked in this room largely about that. That's probably the most significant piece of, of what's going on that's leading to that burnout. And I don't think that we have, and that's why I, I feel negative about Counselor Haggard's optimism, because I, I don't think that we have a solution in front of us for that. I do know that we, we have had discussions as a council about what alternative models could be and if our community or if our, our local government could take a really proactive approach to trying to bring some more resources to that. So I think what I would say to you is that I'm being presumptive saying that that is the issue. I, I know it's not the whole issue, but our council is determined to find another way to support the fire department and the other resources that exist in our community around some of those medical calls. We've had a lot of conversations already and I think we're going to continue to hopefully work with the province to put together potential new service options. Some of those service options have been talked about in these council chambers and have been advocated for publicly by this council. So when it comes to the firefighters needing to know that there's, you know, hope for a change, I don't know if council will approve this year or next year additional firefighters. But I do feel very confident that council is going to make significant pushes to try to bring some additional resources to our community to help people who are struggling from the opioid crisis and, and related challenges that go along with that. And I think that the potential $300,000 a year for these two firefighters could potentially go to some of that overdose work and overdose response work in our community to fill a budget that would make a whole lot more of a difference to the firefighters seeing in sort of a, a change of scope of work. So sorry if I've made assumptions in, you know, where some of that burnout is coming from. That is what I'm hearing from firefighters and not every single one of them. But yeah, I, I can imagine that that work would have a significant strain for all people in our community who are out responding to people who have, who are having really serious mental health and addiction challenges. Counselor Dame and then Counselor Petola?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah. And I totally agree with your comments. I, I don't think that this is in any way meant to sort of diminish or, or, you know, take from the legitimacy of the, what our firefighters are going through right now. It's very real. And, and we, we need solutions. And I think that I would have no problem passing these requests, approving these requests if I felt confident that they were, that this was going to address those issues. And, and I, and I think that we're, you know, I, I think that they're largely, I don't want to say Band-Aid solutions because that again feels diminishing, but, but they're not addressing the larger systemic issue that we're, we're dealing with right now. And, and I don't, I don't know that, that the answer is to continue to burden the local residents with the issue when it shouldn't really be their issue in the first place. And so I do agree that what we need is a bigger systemic change. And, and that should be our focus. And in the meantime, I'm, I'm not sure exactly how best to support our firefighters in this. But, but yeah, I, I agree.
Thank you. Counselor Petola?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I completely agree with all the previous comments. If this is the only option, then it's the only option. And I think we would, I would be much more likely to support it. But I would like to know all the other options first. And in that train of thought, it's something out of left field, but that's not unlike me. I don't, I don't know the legislative requirements or prohibitions against running a ambulance service or ambulance type service. Certainly we can have paramedics and we do a lot of the emergency health services jobs already. And we do drive ambulances already on occasion. I'm wondering, just to think about, if a cheaper and more effective option would be simply running an emergency transport vehicle that would pick up people and take them to the hospital so they can be cared for without tying up a whole crew until an ambulance arrives simply for the purpose of transport. It seems to me that a lot of the time, not all the time, but a lot of the time, the issue is transport. And so if we can fill that need at a more cost-effective basis, that would also be a solution I would consider. Thank you.
Can we just pay the overtime of B C ambulance, which would probably be significantly less to get more paramedics in our community, which would probably be significantly less than any of the alternatives? So I, I think that there's, as Counselor Petola speaks and, and as a few of the other comments have been made, I have a few ideas that I'd like to think through. I'm not prepared to say no to this yet, although I do recognize that earlier in the agenda, I did say I won't support this. But, you know, here we are, nine, 10 me. So I'm not sure we want to, I don't, I don't know if we have enough information yet to look at the whole picture on what the issue is. I'd like to move to defer the two motions as written. Thank you, seconded by Counselor Solda. And I'd like to say when to defer it to. And I'm not sure I have that information yet, but I guess late in budget, which Andrew is, you know, reminding me is not very far away. So we're sort of, I, I guess I'm making a motion to defer it to like our late March, no, mid-March budget meeting. Sometime in March, a March budget meeting for further discussion. Because I, I think there's other ideas to, to work through, certainly not to make any firm progress on, but to sort of add to this conversation around the fire departments and medical response generally in our community. So it is really just an effort to bring it back to our agenda. There may not be any real change in outcome. I don't want to give false hope that we are going to fund these positions. But I think that what we are seeing from council is a real desire to do something. And if nothing else, let's bring this back, have another conversation about it, see how council feels, and give a little bit of time for each of us to give reasonable thought if there's any real alternatives out there. Counselor Haggard?
Just a couple of quick comments. I'm actually open to approving the mid-support for this year. I would like to push off the two additional full-time firefighters until 2026 because I did send an idea to Mike that I want to flush out first before I make that commitment. But I understand and I want to do something sincerely. And with the fire prevention officer and the training officer, I actually think those should be regional positions, especially if the ACRD is looking at having a fire training center. I just think that would be a really natural tie-in. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Mealy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, just, just really quickly, not certain it's a point of order, but this happened at the Regional District Meeting the other day. It's a motion to defer. So the conversation should be on the deference of the motion, not the actual motion. So, but however, in saying that, Counselor Haggard had a couple of comments. I was wondering if I just, if I could ask a question then, if that's okay. So just, just for my information, so the $58,094 for the administrative support is a 0.6 position and that's the same throughout the year. So it doesn't matter when it starts really, it's just Q3. I just want to ask if the established training officer position for $218,000 is going to start in Q1 of 2026? And then if so, the two firefighters are supposed to be in Q4 of 2025. Can that be 2026? Or is there a preference? The reason why it's in Q4 is to cover people at the end of the year, which I can kind of see that being. But is there any specific reason why through you, sorry to the chief, is that we're going to look at the two firefighters commencing in the last quarter of this year rather than the first quarter of next year?
Yeah. So the reason behind that is strictly recognition of the financial situation of the, that the city is in. So we could utilize those personnel today. However, we were trying to find creative ways to reduce the burden for this, this year.
Okay. Counselor Pipuki?
Thank you, Madam. If, a comment, if we add two more firefighters to it, will this reduce the amount of overtime being paid? And if we add two firefighters full-time, does that mean the ambulance service, the province is getting into dire problems themselves? Is this going to mean the firemen do more? Is this going to mean the firemen do more ambulance work and not get burnt out as much? Or how how will this, will two firefighters reduce the firefighting load? Thank you.
Yeah, so the two firefighters would conceptually reduce overtime. Will it be, you know, one-for-one? Every dollar that we spend on them is a dollar that we get off on our overtime bill. Evidently, it won't be that successful, but it will it will offset to a great degree. With regards to the first responder program, at the last regular council meeting, we amended our levels of service for first responders. That is, that was enacted within 24 hours of that decision being made. So we are already responding at that level of reds, purples, and then essentially when B C AHS needs assistance with gaining access, rescue or or lift assist. So we are in control of the types of calls that we respond to, and that wouldn't change without council making that or giving that direction.
Thank you very much. Okay, council, we have a motion to defer to some meeting in March. And apologies for that bad motion. Sarah?
If I may, we are proposing that the financial plan bylaw be adopted on the March 10 meeting. So is it okay if we say February 18? That's the last COW meeting.
I think that's perfectly fine. Thank you. It just really is intended to give council a bit of an opportunity to to have somewhat additional thought on this issue, just recognizing that it is a tough one, and there is, you know, potential overtime savings to some extent as well. So, okay, on the motion to defer, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. Thank you. All right. And last item on our agenda is the Alberni Valley, or sorry, Alberni District Secondary School graduation ceremonies at the Alberni Valley Multiplex.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Alberni District Secondary School graduation ceremonies have been held at the multiplex for a number of years. Since 2020, ADSS has elected to host the ceremonies on their school property. When city staff reached out to the school in previous years about returning to the multiplex, school administrators indicated that though their cost to rent the multiplex was just over $425, the cost to rent audiovisual equipment and the logistics and time investment made it prohibitive for ADSS to host their ceremony off of school grounds. As such, city staff proceeded with scheduling projects for the spring of 2025, and we do not have enough time this spring to complete the off-season projects, host the graduation ceremonies on the drive floor, install ICE, and host the West Coast Hockey Prep Camp. Though the facility schedule for 2025 does not enable ADSS to host the ceremony at the multiplex, city staff welcome the opportunity to explore hosting the ceremony again, starting in 2026.
Thank you very much. Do you have a number on how much the the audiovisual rental equipment was? That was the only thing that I didn't see in the report.
No, Madam Chair, since that's an expense of an event, city staff aren't apprised of of what information, so it's not rented by the city. So any equipment that an event would rent themselves from an outside provider, we wouldn't be privy to that information.
Thank you. I wasn't aware of that. I thought it was us charging it to them or renting it to them. Okay. Other questions? Counselor Petola.
Just wondering about how close that $425 is to what somebody might call market rate? Or more particularly, how much does the ADSS rent their auditorium for?
Madam Chair, I wouldn't know the number off the cuff as far as what ADSS might rent their their own at-home space out to public. As far as market rates go, of course, outlined in the fees and charges bylaw that will be coming back to council or committee the whole in a future meeting here in the spring, the the rates have been updated accordingly based on the comparator communities for the city.
Thank you. Okay. Would somebody like to make the motion? Counselor Petola.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Committee of the Whole receives the report, Alberni District Secondary School graduation ceremonies at the Alberni Valley Multiplex, dated December 24, 2024.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Petola, seconded by Counselor Solder. And I guess I just want to say that I've heard from many people, parents of graduates at the high school, who really want to see the ceremonies back. And I do think there's, you know, some mixed messaging around why they haven't been able to be there, you know, what the costs are and such. So I I hope that although it's disappointing we can't have it this year, I do understand it makes a lot of sense. We've already booked things. Unfortunately, can't make it work. But I do hope that we're really able to make sure that from our end, at least, we prioritize working with ADSS for 2026 graduation. And if they choose to still host it elsewhere, then that's certainly their choice. But I know that the the grad committee at least certainly wants to have it at at the multiplex, and it's disappointing that it can't be. So, okay, on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. Thank you. All right, and on to question period. This is an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions of the committee. For anyone participating electronically, please please use the raise your hand feature. Would any members of the public like to ask questions? Come on forward, Joseph.
Hi, my name is Joseph Laskosik. I'll give my last name since somebody's trying to pronounce it. I'll just, that way you know. Laskosik, yeah. Just clarification, that was mentioned that I attended the ACRD meeting recently, which I did. And I didn't really suggest that they take over or that they buy it. No. Yeah.
Joseph, take the credit, because you're a big hero to us.
Oh, probably not to others, though. So what I was sort of there for was just to sort of make them aware, or were they aware of a couple of things that had been discussed here? And so I wasn't really suggesting anything. I was just saying, were you aware of this? And the one was at one of the meetings where it was discussed on one of the motions, that city owns four parks outside of Salem, which can can be disposed of, placed under ACRD Parks Service, or simply stopped maintenance. So I just brought that up, if they were aware of that or not. And further to that, the second thing that I mentioned was the decision to not continue any maintenance on, I think I've got that right, on the paper mill dam residents. And that was sort of, I brought that up too, if they were aware of that. Boy, that sounds loud. If they were aware that maintenance had been stopped on that. So I didn't really make any suggestions. I just brought up if they were aware, and they said they weren't aware of it. But now that it was brought forward, they would probably hear about it. So that was kind of the discussion. So just a clarification on that. So a couple of quick questions. You're looking at the budget stuff. You're looking at saving some costs here and there. And just a couple of things I want to I want to bring up is I noticed on their reduction in budget and trail maintenance, there's suggestions in there under parks and rec. They have $20,000 and $15,000 in there. So I take it that's probably including our new trail, our key-to-key, that cost cutting on, cutting costs on maintenance on that, that may be part of it. If they're going to be cutting costs, that would probably be on our new trail. And with the trail, the key-to-key, I'm just going to bring up, see if I can grab it here. Just a sec.
And Joseph, just for clarification, those motions were not made. So
Right. Not motions, they were kind of
It was just information in our report. So nobody on council or committee made a motion to reduce service level of trails.
Thank you. Oh, okay. Good on the trail thing. Okay, perfect. Thank you. I thought you were referring to the the four, the four parks. Connection to the key-to-key, looking at that, it's, this is under the capital plan 2024. It's a sec. It's easier when I'm sitting down for some reason. There shows the costs on that and what's been spent to date. It shows the initial, it shows funds remaining. I think it says remaining funds. And then it says to be completed in 2024 with some work, work still remaining, perhaps, or continuing on that. I'm just wondering, with costs being cut or budget year 2025, looking at that, are there continued costs going to be on the trail for 2025? And can those be looked at as being work stopped at this point to save some money?
Mike, if you'd like to speak to the budget for that project.
Sure. Yeah, we we have finished the trail now to the sense of to regulatory signage, the paving width, et cetera. However, there is some wayfinding left for the sign, and there's some additional savings. There is a report coming forward to council to consider, and we'll be recommending to finish the wayfinding sign as intended. But then it would be up to council to deal with the remainder in a way that they want.
Good. Thank you. Okay. And the next question is on the SoMAs lands. Gee. Sorry. Having a little trouble here. Looking at that again, it was the, this was brought up during one of the audit meetings recently. I think it was in November, I believe. And it just looks at the SoMAs lands. And it mentions revenue and costs up to March 31 of 2024. So of course, there will be an update on that with the next audit meeting. But and and but it mentions in there the City of Port Alberni funding of 1.2 million, grant funding out of a million, salvage of 1.4, remediation expenses to June of June 30 of 583,000, demolition, site maintenance and demolition at 2.2. And it says that net refund, net funding remaining for SoMAs is $843,000. Now, that was as of March, so I take it some of that's been spent. So of course, there's going to be more, again, more expenses on the SoMAs land for 2025. I haven't seen what the actual cost will be for what they're budgeting for continuation. And again, can it be put a stop to and say, leave it alone? And with that in mind, and I know it's a, so that could be set aside, left alone for a while, and you could say, well, no, we've got Matthews West, and different things are happening, and so we want to progress with it. Even the sale, I don't know if it's an option to sell as it is and say, somebody else look after that, because there's costs involved, and we just don't want to be bothered with it, and someone else can come in. And I don't know if that's even, it might be a pie in the sky thing, but I'm just, I'm just thinking, you know, why are we spending all that money each year on something that it could be sold and a developer come in, of course, has to go through all the planning committee. It still has to be done that, but the city is not responsible for continuation of spending funds on something that is
Yeah, thank you. And the agreement with Matthews West will be coming very soon, and it is, there's been a very complex set of negotiations, as I'm sure you can imagine. It is a key piece of property for the community, and we want to make sure that first and foremost the city's best interests and needs are handled. That said, Mike, I'll let you speak to the budget and any information that we can provide, because I know that we, yeah, there's cognizant thought put into 2025.
Yeah, thanks for the question. So we did just do a press release, and if you go on, let's connect Port Alberni. Under the SoMAs project, there is a news release that it does have some budget numbers there, many that you just stated there. And then there is a remaining amount that you will see later in the budget this year, and what is happening with that for council to consider.
Sounds good. Thank you. One last question. In the budget too, for 2025, as I mentioned of tree planting, $79,000, I believe. And then in 2026, $80,000. Again, we all love our trees. We live in a valley full of trees. And again, is that something that can be, I know it's a small thing maybe, but again, is it something that can be, say, we don't really need that at this point. There's a cost savings there, and can be looked at a different date again, if if so desired. Thank you.
Thanks very much for the question. I'm not sure that last one was a question, but that's okay. Can it be moved? Absolutely. Leave it to council. Are there other members of the public who'd like to ask a question?
Good evening. My name is Bob East, and I've, I'm just here as a member of the IHS for a number of years. And I just have a couple of personal questions. I guess the first one that the mayor and council would be, we have been looking for feedback regarding the Heritage Center and the Curling Rink and the woodworking shop. And I know we're sort of small potatoes after listening to several year meetings of where you're at. But we do have our monthly meeting tomorrow night, and I've been here tonight just to see if anything filtered out. And next month, we have our annual elections and generally don't have a month, a monthly meeting. So it would have, anything that would have been available to take forward to the group would have been appreciated. I also have heard and a lot of the comments from the fire department. For a lot of my working careers, I was a fire chief, as well as in my regular job, for the mills and confined space rescue, high-angle rescue. We we put quite a bit of money into it when the fire department first caught in, and appreciated just having that behind us all the way forward. I guess there's quite a few things, but I won't take any more of your time up tonight. And I'm sure you're going to give Charles a bunch of stuff to bring for tomorrow night. Thank you.
I'll go to Counselor Mealy.
Thank you very much. Through to you, to Mr. East. Good to see you. And I will be at the meeting tomorrow, and you can ask me any questions. That doesn't change. It's not a problem. So I'm always used to a good fight at the I W A Hall, let's put it that way. But no, it'll be fine. But nothing so far, just the the process right now is is the motion will go to the next council meeting, and then council will decide to to move forward in one way or the other. So but I'll be there tomorrow to answer any questions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Sure, one more question.
Sorry, flipping through this thing, because I'm I'm terrible at taking notes and getting this stuff down on paper. Just in the strategic plan and community plan, different things, there is mention, I think, of small businesses being promoted, lots of commercial space that's empty, that sort of thing. I recently was up on, I believe it was called Dunn, and I just wonder if anybody's been up there. That's the question. Have you been up there and seen what's, there's probably four businesses that have moved up on Dundalk, is how you say it, up on the, yeah, that there's a new development up there. And there's four businesses that were in the city that are now up there. And I just wonder if you're aware, if you're not aware of that. It just, again, I don't know why they moved up, but if you're not aware of it, go up and have a look. I was a bit surprised to see some businesses. I thought, odd spot. Why wouldn't, why wouldn't, why wouldn't you stay in town and hopefully do what the city wants instead of moving into regional district for their for their business? Yeah.
Yeah, you might be aware of the tax discrepancy between the city and regional district, which is why we're having some of these hard conversations, although nobody wants to see reductions in any of their services. We do have a significant tax discrepancy between the regional district and the city of Port Alberni, and so it has put us in a challenging position, unfortunately, where the vast majority of the services that are offered to the entire Alberni Valley are funded solely by City of Port Alberni taxpayers. And that trickles down, obviously, to business, and and really specifically, it creates challenge for small business. So although we've made an effort, certainly even before my time on council, there was an intentional effort to not increase small business taxes, and the rate stayed stagnant as for several years. The tax base, that, yeah, tax burden has become challenging, and certainly we're seeing some small businesses move to rural areas where they can have just the same services and pay significantly less taxes. So that's a big part of why we're having these conversations. Thank you. Okay. Would somebody like to move adjournment? Moved by Counselor Solder, seconded by Counselor Mealy. On the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. Thank you.